We good, Joe? Good afternoon. Welcome to Caddo Parish Commission Regular Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at 3:31 PM. At this time, I would like to remind everyone to please silence their cellphones and govern yourselves accordingly. At this time, I will ask for our roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young is absent. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Joan Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake.
Here.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Cothran.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
Okay, you have 11 of 12 Commissioners present. That does constitute a quorum.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will have our invocation by Commissioner Stefan Jones, and we will have our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Ed Lazarus. Please stand.
Let us pray. God our Father, we thank you for life, for health, and for strength. We thank you, oh God, for the privilege to call you our God. We gathered today to do the business of the Parish of Caddo, and it is our prayer that everything we say and do in this meeting is pleasing to your sight. God, we pray that we would do your will and the will of the people. Pray, oh God, that we can come in reason together, be cordial with one another, oh God, and even when we disagree that we don't become disagreeable. Thank you, oh God, for our parish and citizens thereof. We thank you for our children. We pray that you will protect them and keep them safe from all hurt, harm, and danger. Oh God, that they can safely attend school and play in their neighborhoods without the fear of any type of harm coming their way. God, bind us together in unity and love as we move forward. This is our prayer, and we pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Everyone, place your hand over your heart, there's proper hand and bow salute. Remember our POWs and MIs. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners Jones and Lazarus. Mr. Clerk?
I'm not aware of any agenda additions today unless you have any, Madam President.
No, sir, I do not have any.
Okay, then we'll move forward to Citizens' comments, where Citizens are asked to fill out a comment card and submit those to my left. And we have received, I believe, at least five comment cards so far that have been submitted to the Chairperson.
I have four.
Individual comments are limited to three minutes.
Do you have another one? All right, the first comment card I have is former Commissioner Michael Williams.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Remember the horseshoe to the outstanding state champion of Huntington High School, Girl Raiders and their coaches. With Dottie Bell in office, also to our Chairman. Look, you know why I'm here, and rise to speak in support of resolution, I think, in 16, 17, 18, or 18, 19, and 20.
Yes.
I rise as a former county parish commissioner, businessman, father, grandfather, preacher, former politician, community activist, and civil rights activist in this community to ask that you would reconsider your conscience to vote for a particular ordinance that's good for all American people. I also rise to say that God has already signed the executive order of DEI. So don't need to change anything that law has already done. This is a very uncomfortable conversation to talk about the reality in America. We look at how the vision, how the Republican Party is using the political playbook of 2025, which is your president's name is missing 313 times about what's going on, about the barbaric, inhumane policies against poor people in America. So that's a time to be analytical, philosophical, intellectual. There's not a time right now to be silent. Because this is not about party or race or people, socioeconomic backgrounds. It's about cutting the fundamental program for poor people that live in your district that you asked to vote for you. Your grandmother, your sister, your brother, your parishioner you go to church with, that you sit in front of, and you got the dads to devote, or cut program that hurt poor people, middle-class people, working people, white people, black people, Asian people, brown people. And you should have done it with a no-conscious attitude like it ain't nothing. But our vote matter, and our money matters. If you own business, we go ask for peaceful protests against those that vote against policies that help people. All this propaganda rhetoric that's coming out of Congress, how the Republican Party is bad, international, global for America. It hurting us. It's gonna hurt the NGO, the FBO, and the CBO. Faith-based organization, and community-based organization, and your non-government affairs. Because most of the pain and the sufferable fall on rural America, suburban America, and urban America. It's gonna fall on the churches. Salvation Army's gonna fall on goodwill, gonna fall on you. So I pray that you would reconsider just propaganda that's going on in our community and our station. Try to work together. Who made you superior imperials over this country that God made? He didn't make white privilege that we white supremacists in America. You look better than nobody else. We bleed the same, we breed the same, but we're not treated the same on the side of America. Those that control the goal make the rule. This is wrong, bad policy. It's in the backseat to the next generation of children to be inclusive and work together for the best for all people in this country we call America. The American dream is becoming an American nightmare on the side of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. The next comment card I have is Nancy Trillwill. Treadwell.
Nancy Treadwell.
Welcome, Ms. Treadwell. If you would, just please state your name for the record.
My name is Nancy Treadwell. I live in Broadmoor in Shreveport. I come up to basically oppose what Mr. Williams just said. In my opinion, and everything I research and understand, the America First Agenda is looking to get rid of fraud, waste, and abuse. It is not and has not cut $1 to take away from an American in need. And I want to stress that. Not $1 has come from the hand or pocket of an American in need. No one has lost their home, no one will lose their home. The goal is to get rid of waste, fraud, and abuse. And in my opinion, everyone who says differently is lying or intentionally causing fear. And that includes everyone on this horseshoe and everyone who stands up to speak. You are the ones creating division. More than 50% of the American people voted for this, and I'm coming up to oppose the resolution, 18.3, mass firings of federal employees. If their jobs aren't needed, they need to go. I don't oppose cutting National AID because 95% of it is fraud, waste, or abuse, or kickbacks. And again, they haven't taken one bit of aid away from a person in another nation who needs help. I don't oppose these tariffs because there's a specific reason for them. Because we have not been on an even playing field with the rest of the world, and that's all these are for. I'm happy to talk and argue about these things, but to just make across-the-board statements that they're intended to hurt people in need is the opposite of the truth. If we can get rid of the waste and fraud, the people who need it the most can have more. And every part of our communities can prosper. So when each of you talk about maybe you shouldn't call yourself a Christian if you support America First, or don't want higher taxes, or believe that unnecessary federal wasted funds should not be corrected. If you disagree with us, great. But don't imply we shouldn't call ourselves Christians or should go to our churches and change our minds about how we think is best to make our nation more prosperous and our people have a better future. I stood up here a year and a half ago and had some of you call me a racist, told me to shut my mouth until I understood better what I was talking about. And I'll tell you now, that's not a way to heal divisiveness.
Ms. Treadwell, your time has expired. Thank you. The next comment card I have is Toni C. Williams.
For the record, my name is Toni Williams, and I work with the Veteran Celebration Committee, the Citizens Disaster Review Committee, and the Caddo Community Action Agency. I stand today to ask all the Commissioners to vote for Resolution 18 and 19. We can all agree that our government is robust and need cutting, and there's no doubt that there's areas that do need more efficiency. There are options to do this in organized fashion. Our government should be looking at analytics, experience, and research as they decision make. I say this as someone who's actually had to do this in the Army, where we have to close and merge units that affected thousands of people, soldiers and family members. It's not something you do overnight via a tweet or an email. It takes months, if not years, of actual planning, and you have to have people involved with ownership. People who actually have meeting to gain, which I did. So I made those decisions in a smart way because I had buy-in in the Army, okay? What we see today in Washington is totally different. We see someone making decisions that doesn't actually have buy-in. Elon Musk has not been elected by the citizens, and he has not passed any kind of congressional confirmation. The optics are even worse. We say that veteran concerns are a priority, but we see veterans being fired and the gutting of the very departments that service them. It just doesn't make sense. We say that our skies are safe as they've always been, but we see all these issues with the aircrafts, and there are rumors of firing traffic controllers. We're in tax season, and there's rumors of firing IRS people. We even saw people in the Energy Department get fired, only to be rehired when we realized we needed to regain, you know, regain control and functionality of our nuclear energy. This is horrible optics, and it show chaos. It makes me wonder, has the Department of Government Efficiency ever heard of a smart goal? Smart goals are specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. Smart goals create common objectives, shared understanding, and they create synergy. I tell you, what I see today in Washington, DC is not smart at all. Let us stand now and raise our voices in opposition of what I see as a ill-planned dissembling of my government. I am not against efficiency. I've helped do it in the Army. But I am against what I see being done today in the name of efficiency. So let them be able to say, Caddo Parish got it right. They understand. So please support common sense and citizenship ideals and vote to pass these resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. The next comment card I have is Emma Shepherd. Ms. Shepherd, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Emma Shepherd, and good afternoon, Madam President
Good afternoon.
and the Commissioners. I am speaking today as an individual. Today, I stand with the Caddo Commissioners, and I support the Resolutions 18.3 through 18.5. My first question is, where are the people we elected to represent our interests? Since they are nowhere to be found, it is time for us to become active. It does no good to just complain about what we are seeing happening to our country. If these senseless actions continue and they dismantle the Department of Education, I am concerned that our children will suffer, that students with disabilities will lose critical support, classroom sizes will increase to the point where it will hinder them from getting 101 assistance that's necessary. Head Start has been a great source of getting children ready for kindergarten. Early childhood education is a key to children being successful in life. As these doge incidents are centered around getting funds that will give billionaires tax braces, how can they sleep at night when they are taking food from children at school that at least get two meals a day? Many of our seniors who get Medicaid or Medicare will no longer get the medicine and care necessary for their well-being. How dare them? Our veterans may be denied the services that they need. Veterans have been the backbone of our state. And I leave you with this. We must fight for our children. We must fight for our most vulnerable population, and we must fight for our veterans. What I mean, what I say, and let me be clear. We fight with our voices, and we fight with our votes. So in voting, make sure we understand what we are voting for because some of the language is meant to be misleading, vague, and confusing. So again, I thank you for your time, and I ask everyone to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. The next card I have is Mr. President of NAACP, Alvin Oliver, and Vice President, Mr. Lester Smith.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Welcome. Please state your names for the record.
Alvin Oliver. Do we need to give an address here? Okay, Alvin Oliver. First of all, again, I'm Alvin Oliver. I'm the newly-elected President of the Shreveport Branch of the NAACP 6078B, along with my first Vice President, Lester Smith, and one of our Executive Board members, former Commissioner Michael Williams. So again, let me say thank you for having us here. Again, I'm your newly-elected President. We'd like to consider ourselves the all-new NAACP unlike you've seen before. And what we want to do today is invite you folks to mark your calendars, you folks in the audience as well, to mark your calendars for Wednesday, April 9. At 7:00 PM, Wednesday, April 9. At 7:00 PM, we're going to have our official swearing-in at the Downtown Convention Center at 7:00 PM. Some of you Commissioners will be speaking, along with some of our other city leaders. They will be there also. And so, again, I want to say that the NAACP and our entire new team, we plan to uphold the great legacy of the NAACP. We plan to work in a collaborative effort with our parish leaders, our city leaders, and our law enforcement partners. We plan to serve the people of Shreveport the way that they should be served. We're going to make Shreveport proud and the NAACP proud. And for those of you who want to join in this fight, you can go to NAACP.org. NAACP.org, join the Shreveport Branch 6078B. Let's roll up our sleeves and go to work. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Lester Smith. I'm first Vice President. I reside at 4148 Thiel Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm elated to be a part of this team. I mean, we've been, there's a struggle going on, and we need people that are genuinely concerned about the issues that we're confronted with. We no longer fight the black and the white issues as prevalent as we used to fight. There's still black and white issues to be fought. But we gotta fight people issues and human rights. And that's what we plan to do as local NAACP, is to fight human right issues. Because we all got issues somewhere, somehow, we got issues. So we all want to have to join together. Not a black Shreveport, not a white Shreveport, but a Shreveport that's inclusive of all the people that are represented and living in Shreveport. We gotta join this fight and fight for equality for all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next card I have is, is this Calvin Presley?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Welcome, Mr. Presley.
Thank you for the opportunity to communicate very briefly. I am a retired Air Force veteran, 20 years. My wife is a retired Air Force veteran, 24 years. My daughter is a retired Air Force veteran, 20 years. My son-in-law, retired Air Force veteran, 20 years. I never had any intention of enlisted in the military until I didn't have any other choices. And after I did the first 10 years and figured out I was closer to where I was going and where I was coming from, I stayed another 10. I don't regret anything, any time serving in the military. It was a good time. I didn't go in there looking for a father. I had a father, but all I had to do was watch him, listen to him, and I would have turned out to be a decent man. Military didn't provide that for me. The relationships that I established in the military were across-the-board, ethnically, socially, et cetera. It seems to me, in this season of America, we don't do well unless we have a foreign enemy. When we have 911 attacks on our country, we come together. We wave the flag. And it's not so much about ethnicity, social status, those things that people measure other people's value by or lack thereof. However, in this season, it seems since we don't have any foreign enemies, we fighting within. It's not a good thing. I particularly am concerned with veterans. Abraham Lincoln stated, "To care for the ones who have borne the battle, and to care for his widows and his orphans." It's not an original statement. First Timothy 5 also refers to the same methodology. I agree with that. I attempt to live that way every day. I would urge you as Commissioners to send a message to the United States of America Executive Branch to put the hacksaw, chainsaw down, and pick up the mantle of brotherly love, friendship, cooperation, particularly for the veteran. He has borne the battle. He has suffered and continues to suffer, and will suffer even the more if the VA is cut, diminish money taken from them. I urge you, from the bottom of my heart, to send a message to Washington that Caddo Parish, United States of America, is with what's right, not what feels good. I was able to witness to your vote on the work session.
Mr. Presley, your time has expired.
And I pray your vote today is not along ethnic lines like it was on Monday.
Thank you. The last card I have is Joyce Rogers.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. President.
I'm Joyce Rogers, and I have come to speak in support of the Resolution 18 of 2025-19. I believe there are three sponsored by Commissioner Ken Epperson. I want to support those because it's difficult to just sit and listen to people who know better and don't do better. It's sad when we listen to people who say they know God and yet do ungodly things. Now, I don't know how we can afford to take food out children's mouths. I can't see how we can afford to say, children don't need to go to school. You yourselves are educated. Otherwise, I hope you wouldn't be up there. Because if we don't understand the importance of education, we're dumbing down our nation. When our nation is dumbed down, we become weak to everyone who wants to come against us. We are weakening our military. People who fought for us, the veterans, you're sitting here today in a safe spot because somebody fought for you. How many of you in the military have ever been in the military? And I know some have. But too often, we're getting people who have no knowledge of what it means to go to war. They think it's just a matter of telling people, this is who I am. I refuse to just listen to foolishness when we know better. We are not stupid people, but we need to quit acting like we're stupid. You can play a game so long until that's who you become. You're stupid. Now, listen, if we get rid of education, our nation is dumbed down. If we get rid of the military, our nation is weak. If we get rid of jobs, our people have no jobs, and so therefore they have no health benefits. If there are no health benefits, no jobs, no food, what you might say, no education, who do we expect to take care of us? We are becoming a prey for another country to take us over if we don't stand up for what's right. And God is not asleep. Sometime, he holds us accountable, just like he holds us accountable for what we say. He holds us accountable for what we don't say when we know better. We know what's happening now is wrong. I pray that, and the Scriptures say, pray for people in authority. But it's not just praying so that we can do better. It's praying to keep your souls out of hell. Because if you wrong, that's where you going. The Scriptures say, all liars will have their place in the lake of fire. And it doesn't mean you told a lie. We all have told a lie. But liars, no one should be holding your soul accountable that they send you to hell. God bless you.
That will complete our comment cards. Before we move on with our agenda, I thank you for listening to the comments in favor and against. This is the People's Chamber, and that is what we're here for, is to listen to those comments. I would like to recognize Ms. Dottie Bell from the School Board, District 12. Welcome. Thank you for being here with us today. And Gina Martinez from the Attorney General's Office. Welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a group of young ladies who needs to get back to their campus. So at this time, I'm going to ask that we would come back to adopting our regular session minutes and just go on to this special resolution. And if that passes by acclamation, there's no opposition, we'll go on with the special resolution.
Okay, thank you so much. Would you like to vote on it first, or would you like to do the presentation and then vote? Oh, by acclamation, okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
We're ready.
And I'm sorry, I meant on the adoption of this special resolution, not just the...
Yes, it's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, and we'll, we can vote on it.
To take it out of order and adopt?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we got that in the record correctly.
We do.
Thank you very much.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Victor Thomas and seconded by the Chair.
Thank you so much. And now, at this time, would you like me to go ahead and start reading it into the record? And we can invite the Lady Raiders down to the front?
Yes, Huntington Raiders. Would you please come to the front? And everyone, please stand. Would everyone please stand?
And as the champions make their way forward, I will read this record into, I will read this resolution into the record. This is a special resolution of recognition for the Lady Raiders, Division One Select State Champions, and it reads, "Whereas the Caddo Parish Commission has observed with pride and satisfaction as the Lady Raiders of Huntington High School have worked all season to build an incredible dominance in girls' basketball. And whereas the Lady Raiders have emerged as Division One Select State Champions, State Champions being the first time in Huntington High School's history to have won a basketball state championship. The win gave the Lady Raiders a 23-6 season record and a 7-1 district record. And whereas the Lady Raiders victory also provided other titles to reflect upon, including Most Outstanding Player in LHSAA Division One Select Championship Game, Carly Hamilton with 27 points, eight rebounds, and four steals. McDonald's All-American Jamari Bell and Carly Hamilton. And the 1-5A First Team All-District Carly Hamilton and Kendall Graham. 1-5A Second Team All-District Jamari Bell and 1-5A Honorable Mention Kaylee Dupree and Kendall Stevenson. Whereas the Lady Raiders are not only dominated on the court, but also in the classroom, with an overall team GPA of 3.8. Jamari Bell and Carly Hamilton have worked hard to obtain their associate's degrees before graduating. And Jamari Bell, Carly Hamilton, and Jayla Phillips have been named on the LHSAA All-Academic Class List. And whereas Coach Brian Shine and Coach Ricky Evans are 218 and 44 in eight years, with two state championships in two different divisions, as well as two state runner-ups in two different divisions. And whereas, under the steady leadership of Coaches Brian Shine, Ricky Evans, and Keisha McLendon, the Lady Raiders developed a mature, determined approach to their game, an approach which was augmented by their innate athleticism, their focus, their commitment, and their pride. The result was a team that calmly and steadily did what they need to do to win their games and ultimately the Division One Select State Championship. Now therefore be it resolved by the Caddo Parish Commission, meeting in legal and regular session this 20th day of March, 2025, that it does..." that it does hereby heartily commend and congratulate Coaches Shine, Evans, McLendon and all the team members of the Huntington High School Lady Raiders for the hard work and commitment to bring home the Caddo Parish Division One Select State Championship. And be it further resolved that this commission does wish for the Huntington High School Lady Raiders much continued success in the game of basketball, as well as in the business of life for which their teamwork experiences has so successfully helped to prepare them.
Please be seated and everyone stay where you are in those positions. And we're going to take a quick photo and allow you to have some comments.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate you guys for recognizing us today. Our team has been through a lot of adversity this year, both on and off the floor. Our girls have worked really hard all year to get to this moment. And people see the success now, but they don't see the things, the struggles and the things that we went through behind the scenes. So we are very proud of our kids. We're very proud of their approach to not just the game of basketball, but life as well. I think that they have learned a lot about themselves as well as this team. And I think that we've grown together as a family over the last few months. And we're looking forward to continuing our success. They were able to make history. This is the first state championship in Huntington High School for basketball, for both boys and girls' basketball. So that's a major accomplishment. And we wanted them to understand that, no, this is something that no one can take away from them. Thirty or forty years from now, they will always be history makers. So we're very proud of them and we thank you guys for having us today.
Awesome. Stay right here. We have a few commissioners, Coach. We have a few commissioners who are on the board who has some sentiments that they want to share with you all. The first one I have is Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Yes, Coach. Want to congratulate you and your team. Huntington is near and dear to my heart because I spent twenty years representing it on the City Council as well as at the state. And not only that, I had two sons that graduated from Huntington. So they're very near and dear to my heart. Dottie, you do a great job with those babies, as you say.
My babies.
Yeah, your babies. But again, looking at the grade point average, that's what it's all about. You can do all the athletic if you want, that you want. But what you put up there, no one can take from you. So you take that forward and, you know, let us be proud and we are proud. So again, congratulations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell. Commissioner Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a quick question for you ladies. How many of y'all are members of the leadership, of the leadership program? All right, cool. Well, I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you not only for being outstanding athletes, but also outstanding leaders on your campus. What I want to say is I hope that you guys had a great time coming and visiting with us today. I hope you can see exactly how government works. I had a chance to vote today and I want to encourage you all to please be a part of the process. This is exactly what, what leadership and legislative process looks like. So I want to encourage you all as you go back to let your, let your fellow classmates know about what you guys witnessed here today. Pay attention to it. This is what we mean when we say, when you go and vote. You have to vote for leadership that represents y'all. So I just want to tell y'all, congratulations. Keep up the good work, keep doing what you're doing and go Huntington.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ron Carthen.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies, I just want to say, congratulations and most of all, three point eight GPA. That is phenomenal. The thing is, you know, here in Shreveport, for whatever reason, we only see the worst in you all. And I beg the difference. You all standing here tells me we are in good hands if we allow young people like yourself and others and your coaches and your mentors and your parents to do their due diligence in getting you to that place where each and every one of you all can get. If there's anything I or any of these people sitting around this house you can do to assist you all, please, please, please let us know because the thing is again, hey, we getting old. And I guess what? These are your seats if you choose to. And you can't leave Shreveport. We're going to have to get a sworn statement on your way out. You cannot leave Shreveport. You must stay here, okay? So again, congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Carthen. Vice President Ken Epperson.
Congratulations, Lady Raiders. First in the history of Huntington High School. That tells you exactly what can happen if you are persistent. And guess what? No one gave you that. You earned that through a hard fought season, all the way through that tournament. And the irony of what's happening today is I'm pretty sure you heard some of the comments. I'm glad you're here to hear that. And if you, if you would, Tony Whedon, would you please stand, sir? This young man is a Huntington graduate.
All right.
A United States Army veteran, twenty-three years. He's married, three children. I forget how many degrees he has. But guess what? He worked himself through the military, through his educational process. Nobody gave him anything. He retired as a Master Sergeant E eight. The same thing that it took hundreds of others that was going for that position, the same thing Tony did to earn it. Nobody gave him that. He earned it. And he was our first student commissioner for a day. So make sure you see that young man there. I want you to talk to him, get in contact with him. Coach, have him come out and speak to you. He's, he's phenomenal. And he came back home to Caddo Parish. And that's what we need. Once again, congratulations and God bless you. And Coach, I gave the principal a student oath of commitment, which I had written in nineteen eighty-seven. I spoke to the graduating class of Atkins Elementary and something gave me that speech to give to them. And I've been presenting that to hundreds of students from nineteen eighty-seven up to this date. So please share that with them. Thank you all, God bless you. And continue to make sure you stay focused and persevere because you can do anything that you set your mind to and want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Epperson. Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Hi, welcome so much to our meeting today. I want to congratulate each one of y'all and I want to congratulate the coaches. I'm also a graduate of Huntington High School.
Oh, great. Okay.
I always admired the basketball team, especially the girls. My, I took woodworking in high school and my woodworking coach was the basket, I mean, teacher was CJ. He was the coach. And so I say all the time, I'm not a sporty person, but I did, I was the rebound counter. So I went to every game. And my family were big basketball fans. And so I think this is absolutely cool and wonderful and proud of y'all. And I wanted to share with y'all that my biggest influences in life were my teachers and Coach Johnson. And Ms. Pouncy, who's not with us anymore, she was a civics teacher at Huntington. And she changed my life. And I'm sitting here because of being a student at Huntington and my tenacity, learning from Coach CJ to really tackle life and to never give in, to lead with your heart and to use your mind. And of course, use your hands. And that's what y'all have done. Y'all have used all of those skills and I'm super proud of y'all. And just know that you're going to make great accomplishments in life past this, that this is huge for us and for y'all, but there's many more to come. So thank y'all so much and I'm proud of y'all.
Thank you, Commissioner Grace Ann Blake. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to you all. I consider myself to be the sports junkie on this commission. I always advocate and talk about sports, but I'm, I'm more so excited to hear about the team GPA. I think that is a huge deal. I think, I believe that we need to make sure that we show the bright side of Shreveport, you know? I like all the local media outlets, Tim and Lane, Wade, all those guys. But not, we don't see enough of this on there. We see a lot of the negative stuff. And I really hope that this area can rally behind y'all. When you were getting ready to go down, I let my colleagues know that you'll be playing the state championship that weekend to root for you and pray for you because I'm a three-one-eight versus everybody kind of guy. I'm certainly glad that you're no longer in District one-four-eight. Praise God. Don't have to see y'all compete against the school where I coach at, but I'm proud of you. Doesn't matter where I particular work. I'm proud of Shreveport, I'm proud of three-one-eight. Shout out to the most outstanding player, Carla Hamilton. Grew up with your dad. This young lady is phenomenal. Haven't been following her since she was in middle school, playing that year. Just outstanding. I mean, really good. She's going to be playing college basketball really soon. And we need to keep up with these young ladies and make sure that we give them, you know, our support past this point. Something else that I want you all to remember is, you know, folks are watching you. There's a responsibility that comes with being a champion. People are going to look up to you. There are other young ladies that are playing middle school basketball that want to do what you're doing. So make sure you walk up rightly, that you keep your integrity and you always be who you are. When you get ready to go off to college and other places, people are going to try to put you in positions that's going to try to taint that integrity or try to put you in a position where you may want to go against stuff that you've been raised to do. Always stick with what your parents taught you, what your coaches taught you. Go back to what you've learned, all right? That stuff works. It may seem like it's not cool, but it's going to make sure that you stay alive and you're able to have a fruitful life. So, and it's not always good to be in the in crowd. It's not always cool to be cool. Sometimes it's best to just stand alone, you know? You're not going to be able to stand out, you know, if you don't step up. And so I'm so proud of y'all. I hope we can continue this in Shreveport. Let's go back to back. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I just, I would be remiss if I didn't say congratulations to these women who win during Women History Month. I am so excited to celebrate you today. And I too was a Raider thirty-something years ago. And Coach Fronto taught me free enterprise. Now, I know that was way before a lot of your time. Principal Smith, I want to recognize you back there. Probably was before your time also. But we had some amazing coaches there, Coach Williams. And my personal PE coach was Coach Manuel. She was a beautiful lady and she was very talented. And her favorite sport was tennis. So she taught us so much about tennis and badminton, which is one of my favorite sports. Commissioner Jones mentioned that he is the, the most, what was that word you used about? The sports junkie, okay. Well, I guess I'm the one with the, the, the most person who is up here with kids who are in sports, huh? So I always advocate for great. So I'm so glad that you understand that being an athlete is great, but everyone does not make it to the next level. But what you have between your ears, no one can take away from you. I'm glad that I instilled that in my sons. And one who is currently attending LSU in Baton Rouge, never would have thought he wouldn't be playing football, but he's doing well academically. So I would encourage you to continue to make sure that, as you have heard today, to follow your parents' instructions. They're not going to lead you wrong. Every parent want their child to be better than they were. So continue to reach for your goals, shoot for the moon. And even if you miss, you will be among the stars. I am very proud of you. I hope that some of you are into politics because we have established a youth advisory council here in Caddo Parish. And if you're interested in serving, then see one of these commissioners because we have about thirteen slots still left. So if you're interested in serving your community, this is the perfect place to do it. Again, I'm proud of you. Congratulations. Coach Ricky Evans, my personal friend. Lady Dottie Bell is going to close us out because you know she has a statement.
That's right.
For us and I'm sure some comments as well. But again, we're grateful for your accomplishments.
Can I speak, say one more thing before she closes us out?
Sure.
Okay, well, one and a half things. Coach Evans' dad, he probably doesn't know this, used to make me and his cousin deep practice in front of his Aunt Carolyn's house and run fundamentals. So he, he's been, he's been coach and he ended up growing up to be a coach. It was a cool thing. But I wanted to speak, because Coach Shine didn't mention this, to them overcoming adversity. They tried to make this man look bad early in the season. I know you won't see it, but if you allow me to, I will because I know the integrity that you have and the family that you come from. This is a great man right here, Coach Brian Shine. And the state tried to do everything they can to hold him and this team back. And they fought through it. Never forget that moment because that won't be the last time that happens in life. And I just wanted to speak to your character in front of everyone and put it on the record that Brian Shine is a great man. He's done great things. And you can try to make up whatever you want to make up about people and create whatever falsehoods you want. But the work that you've done will always speak for you. And when you're a person of integrity, God will always cover you. And I wanted to speak that life into you today, brother, because I know what you went through this season and your team had to deal with. God's got your back. He's shown that to you and it won't be the last time that he'll have your back. So I wanted to say that. Thank you, Madam President.
Amen.
Now I can speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all the commission and special thanks to Commissioner Ken Epperson for wanting to do a resolution and recognize this bunch of sweet babies here. And they are the sweet babies. And also the coach and everybody. And what I want to say to you and my friend Cochran, you said the word because y'all know me. On the seventeenth of April, will be the day for these young ladies. And it's going to be all day and I'm going to go plan it right now with a group of people. And also remember now, they are state what?
Champions.
And usually like the Super Bowl, what do they give them when they win the Super Bowl?
Rings.
Okay, get ready. Get your letter ready. Two hundred and seventy-five dollars a piece. You, you got, okay. Would you believe that I'm getting ready to send letters? We gonna buy every one of them their rings and the coach and everybody there. Because look, this is history making. We representing Caddo Parish. Nobody called Boulder Parish and win, DeSota Parish and win, Wester. Who won? Caddo Parish. So we're the state. So y'all get ready for you. You know, Ms. Bell going to ask for money, okay? Right now, I already have five people committed to buying rings. But I was going to surprise them, but I do have another surprise. On the seventeenth, y'all, please put that on your calendar. We going to plan something all day for them. Now, as of now, I think I have two very important people that will be flying into Shreveport to say congratulations to them. I'm the reason I'm not calling names because I don't want to disappoint me. But I want y'all to spend the day with them. That's the day before Good Friday. I got a committee meeting right now. They waiting on me right now so we can plan everything. But if they could do it for the Super Bowl, we could do it too. We can do a parade and everything, right? So we gonna do all the things. So I will see y'all then and get ready. All my friends, my friend, Mr. Atkins, get ready for your letter. I got five rings already paid for. We got twenty-five to do, okay? All right, we ready. What is two hundred and seventy-five dollars? You can do that, okay? All right. Y'all like that? So tell all of them, thank y'all ready for it.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. They got to get back. They got to go back.
So, so Ms. Dottie Bell, since on the seventeenth they'll be celebrated, I would like to invite them on the eighteenth to the Moretown Family Festival. It will be held at Bethune Old Park from eleven AM to two o'clock PM. So come out so we can recognize you there.
And you will be knowing about everything we doing on the seventeenth. Okay, thank y'all.
All right. Okay. Congratulations. Thank you from the state. Wait, is this always on? All right. We're going to have a couple of minutes recess to allow them to exit the chambers. Does that pass by acclamation? Okay, just give them about two minutes and then we'll be ready to start back up. Okay, just give them about two minutes and then we'll be ready to start back up.
Oh, my gosh, I'd love that.
Do what? We're in recess?
I'll double check. What do you say?
We're in a recess?
Yeah.
Well, she's going back. I'm not running my wedges to catch up to anybody.
You gonna do it in global to do it?
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, I mean, you might say you already did.
Well, we just said.
But if you wanna clarify it.
Yeah, we just said to take it out of order and go ahead and present this special resolution, so that's the only one that we had. Since we already got the motion on the floor for them, we wanna just go back to the special resolution.
We can either, whenever y'all prepare. I mean, it's, at some point, we'll have to go back in. Yes, sir. The first cut. We can either go back to the regular order. Back to the first.
Put my cup up.
And then we're gonna move on. Yes, cuz all of those have already been presented.
We have Dottie's cell number. Who? Dottie Bell. Where she's going? Who? Where she's going? Who? Dottie.
Alright. Okay, Jones, back. Alright. Alright, we're back in session and we have a motion in a second on the floor. Parliamentarian Thomas, the chair recognizes you.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, um, inglobo, um, and adopt the special resolutions, um, um, seven point one, uh, I'm sorry, I will also, am I able to, I would also like to adopt the regular session minutes as well. Um, that will be seven one as well as the special resolutions, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, and eight point four.
Okay, and the chair will second that. Would you like to speak on your motion?
Um, no, thank you.
Okay. See no other commissioners on the board? Please vote. In globo and approve as read.
Justice Pecan Kelly, Madam President, we have two eight point three, so eight point three, number one, eight point three, number two.
Yes, and I think he called it eight point four.
And that motion carries with eleven in support, none in opposition, uh, and one absent, and that does also bring us back into the regular order, so there's no need for an additional motion to do that, because now we are back in the regular order.
Right.
Um, and that brings us to communiques and committee reports, where it includes the administrative response to information requests from commissioners.
Mr. CEO.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Uh, we don't have anything, um, to report. Commissioner Cochran, I did give you those list of, uh, job fairs, um, and I know they're gone, but congratulations to Huntington Girls Basketball Team. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners? Alright, Vice President Ken Emerson.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Bryant, I just, uh, want to call to our attention, I got some calls from, uh, the employees at the Office of Motor Vehicles on Raspberry Lane, uh, stating that a, uh, person from the news media from one of the local stations came up to get some services and, uh, he got pretty upset and he was very calloused against employees. However, the situation, I think that they was concerned, he was concerned about is that the state has always had a problem with the computer systems, even when I was out at the Baton Cemetery, it's a very antiquated computer system. And, uh, we just, you know, like to make sure that we get the word out to the citizens that those employees are not to blame for the systems and that, that they have nothing to do with that. And we also wanna let everybody know where we came from. We have a beautiful new building that the Caddo Parish voted in favor of, we, we assuming the lease and responsibilities of it. The, the facilities are light years from where it was down on Norman Street. So let's please make sure that we, uh, let the people know that the, the system is the problem and that's everywhere, all over the state and not the employees. Please don't treat the, uh, employees disrespectful because they don't have anything to do with it, that's all they have to work with. I want to let you know that. And I had another concern, uh, Defenders of Freedom Air Show, I think, will be here, uh, in about a couple of weeks, you know, the Barstail Air Show, we used to call it. And, uh, I caught a glimpse of a flyer that they had advertising it and it appears that on that flyer, I didn't get a chance to get my phone out where I could take a photo of it, that there were several, uh, entities that provided, uh, aircraft maintenance and, uh, but I noticed Southern University Aerospace Technology Center wasn't there. So I was wondering if we could get someone, see if we could get a copy of that flyer and contact Southern, cuz you know, we funded them initially and, uh, I know from a fact that it's been a very good program because I, I know numerous people that got their, uh, certification from there and, and working, you know, all over the United States. Wanna make sure that we, that Southern is included in that.
Yes, sir, we'll research that issue.
And, uh, I got, I got a second concern, you know, we, uh, the, uh, old George P. Hendrix School on Pierre Avenue, um, I assume that it's, uh, what we call it, adjudicated or whatever it is, but I was wondering if we have an interest in that as far as it being on our road, some kind of form and fashion? If we could please get someone in there to remove Mr. Hendrix's name from that dilapidated, terrible-looking structure? A lot of people may not know the history of Mr. George P. Hendrix. He was a phenomenal educator at Union, Junior High School and Union High School. We called him Chief. He headed our debate team, he was chairman of America, he taught American history and world history and civics. And he was a high inspiration to hundreds of students that came through there. And if somebody could please go down there and take his name off of that dilapidated, raggedy facility.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ron Cochran.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, had the opportunity today to attend the Caddo Boja DV Domestic Violence Task Force Meeting. And as a result of that, uh, as you know, next month will be the, uh, National Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month as well. And I invited, uh, the chairperson here to just kinda give a overview of what this is all about. The information was very, uh, rewarding and the number of people that are getting killed in the state of Louisiana was somewhat surprising to me, uh, when we're talking about domestic violence. And the thing is, again, we need to educate our young people concerning domestic violence because again, it starts off young. It don't happen when people just necessarily get older. Uh, but the thing is, there are some things that we must do and must put in place to ensure that this particular issue in life disappears, get minimized to the best of our ability, because once again, we need no one to get hurt, harmed, or killed, uh, concerning these type of issues. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran. Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I did wanna share, um, I had the opportunity to go to the, um, Hearts on a Mission, um, event today at the Ark of Caddo, um, Ark of Caddo Boja. Um, it was a really great event, um, I had a really good time hearing about the different, um, services that they have. I wanted to show some of the photos, but it's too many, uh, for me to, to share on screen, but, um, I did write this down, cuz I wanna share some of the services that they provide and I just want to make sure that the public is aware of that. Um, um, the Ark of Caddo Boja is a one-stop shop for, uh, many of the programs that are offered by the state of Louisiana for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Um, I've definitely wanted to mention them because they are an employer of about five hundred and fifty employees in this area. Um, two hundred of those are part-time, um, they have very flexible hours, um, and I wanted to share this because they don't require you to have a certain level of education or anything like that. They're looking for individuals with big hearts, um, they have the training available to train you to be able to provide those services and be a direct service worker. Um, not only that, we also met with the, um, Northwest Louisiana Human Services District. Um, what they do is they are the first point of entry for any individual or family who is seeking, um, any kind of community home placement services, especially for those with developmental disabilities. It was a beautiful presentation of those individuals who have benefited for many of the services that, um, are in question right now. Um, those services provide tools and resources, not only they provide the foundation for them to be able to apply those tools and resources to everyday life, for them to be able to provide and take care of themselves. Um, we heard from an individual whose, uh, family, um, had supported them all their life, um, but they, they also had the benefit of being able to work with the Ark of Caddo Boja. So when their parents passed away, they were able to sustain themselves and able to live a productive and independent life. And, um, I just thought that was very important for us to share. Um, if you have any questions, please reach out to the Ark of Caddo and also the North Louisiana, um, the North Louisiana Human Services District. Um, once again, it was a really great presentation. I, I'd be more than happy to share with any of my colleagues if they'd like more information about that, um, and thank you, Madam President. That's all right now.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, next Saturday at eleven AM, um, and forgive me, Commissioner Burrell, I'm not overstepping your district.
Again?
Next Saturday on Hickory Street, Hickory Street will be dedicated to Coach Clarence Conway, who passed away earlier this year. He was the head coach of the nineteen sixty-five, uh, Bethune, uh, baseball team who won the state championship, but because of segregation, they were not properly recognized as state champions. And so, um, there are a lot of people who are working to right that wrong, um, but they're going to dedicate at eleven AM, uh, the street to him. He was a great man, lived to be ninety-three years old. He had a couple of, uh, players on that team that went on to play Major League Baseball, uh, as well. And so I want to invite you all to come out and take part of that historic moment, uh, to be out there with him, uh, with his family, uh, to recognize the work that he did. Even after he left Bethune, he continued to work throughout the community, uh, coaching young people after he retired. Um, and so I think that's just a really big, really, really big deal for our children to see things like this. There's a lot of, uh, hidden history in our area that we don't know about and, uh, this is one of those things I think we can take time to recognize. So again, that's the next Saturday, uh, on Hickory Street, which is, uh, right across from Hatterbury Park at eleven AM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Ed Lazarus.
Ed?
Chatterbox.
Don't, don't act so surprised.
E.F. Hood.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to speak on these resolutions before we had the opportunity to vote on them, so that everybody had a, a chance. June twelfth, twenty-eleven, President Obama announced a campaign to cut waste. It's an initiative named by eliminating misspent tax dollars, tax dollars across federal agencies. Executive Order One Three Five Seven Six. November ninth, twenty-eleven, another executive order promoting efficient spending. Twenty-ten, Vice President Joe Biden saying we waste a lot of money on Medicare. One-third of Medicare goes for nothing useful, he said. They're not cutting benefits, just the waste. Resolution about tariffs. May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, President Biden initiated eighteen billion dollars worth of tariffs against China for electric vehicles, semiconductors, solar cells, batteries, steel, aluminum, and medical products. I don't recall this body sending up a resolution back then. Forty-four percent of Americans, according to an NBC poll, forty-four percent of Americans say the country is headed in the right direction under President Trump. That's up from twenty-seven percent back in November, which was still under President Biden. That doesn't sound like a lot. The last time it cracked forty percent was in twenty-twelve. The last time it was forty-four percent or higher goes all the way back to twenty-twenty-four, I mean, excuse me, two thousand and four. After President Trump's speech two weeks ago, according to a CBS UGov poll, seventy-seven percent support his plan to cut waste and spending. Seventy-seven percent back his immigration and border policy. Seventy-six percent approved of his speech. Seventy, uh, excuse me, sixty-eight percent said it made them feel hopeful and proud. Sixty-eight percent said he had a clear plan to tackle inflation and sixty-three percent said he focused on issues they cared about. That's really all I had to say. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazarus. Commissioner, um, Vice President Emerson, you already spoke already, so I'm gonna get, uh, Commissioner Grace Ann Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to let everyone know that today is the first day of spring and that Norton Art Gallery has an opening today called Bloom. And it is, they have a reception from five to seven, open to the public. And I wanted to share with everyone something that's on their page. Um, now that all submitting artists have been notified, we can say that Bloom twenty-twenty-five was out of this world. With five hundred and twenty-seven submissions, this was our largest year yet. Artists from twenty-nine states and twenty countries submitted this year, making it extremely difficult for our judges to choose the fifty-three pieces that would be presented in this year's exhibit. So mark your calendars and come join at the reception. And I wanted to share with everybody that in this year's, um, competition, that we actually have a local artist that one of her pieces was, was chosen and her name is Victoria Coats and she's a hairstylist that works at my salon, Avalon Hair Salon. This is a huge, um, honor and, um, would love for everyone to, if you can, to go see the art at Norton's Art Gallery. It's such a beautiful, um, place that we have right here in Caddo Parish. Also wanna let everyone know that Yuri Drive is still in the middle of its, um, new, um, road, or road construction. The patchwork has been completed and they're now starting to do the overlay. So continue to be vigilant and watching for traffic, driving slow, and know that this is, um, as much as a headache as it is right now, that it, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to have safe, efficient roads. I also would like to, uh, speak on the resolutions. I have, um, a handwritten statement, but I'd rather speak from the heart today. I appreciate Commissioner Lazarus, um, giving the, uh, facts of information and that's what's important to me, our facts. Before I'm ever going to vote on a resolution or an ordinance, I want to know all of the facts and I want to know where things will lead from those facts. And right now, the American population has spoken and we have an administration that is doing, um, a needed task and they are working on waste. And I don't wanna get into the, the weeds about all of the facts that we could sit here and present and discuss. But I do wanna share that as a commissioner, I take it very seriously to lead from my heart. I don't like to speak much about my personal beliefs as a Christian. I just think it's very inappropriate for anyone to accuse people to not be a Christian on this horseshoe or from the audience. We all are coming here with, right now, I believe, some very extreme beliefs. I would like to see us make rational decisions based on facts, calm, and decisions that are gonna help everybody, not just one subgroup of people. And so that's what we're doing. And so for this reason, I will be a no on these resolutions, that we have an administration that has been mandated to do what they're doing. I also believe that we're three months into this presidency and it's a shame to make judgment before anyone's been given time to correct some very serious problems that we have right now in our country. So thank you for that time and I'd like to remind everyone to go see Bloom at Norton Art Gallery. Thank you.
Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I regret that the young people have already left the chamber because I would've liked to have conveyed some additional information to them and it's really And it's really three, three numbers I want us to remember. Five, seven, and two. Five represents five trillion dollars. That is the revenue that the country generated last year. It was four point nine, but from memory, we'll say five. Five trillion dollars in revenue. The seven represents the spending of the country last year. It was actually six point eight, but we'll say seven to remember, remember it more easily. The two represents two trillion dollars in annual deficit. So that two trillion over time has compounded into thirty-six trillion in national debt. So people accuse some of us of having no heart, being heartless, taking food from the mouths of babies. Those, those issues aren't true. Uh, we all have a heart. We all want to see our young peoples thrive and grow and prosper. But you can't prosper under insolvency. And to me, the greatest risk for our country, there are significant, a number of significant risks out there. Uh, international risks. But I fear insolvency is one of the greatest risks that our country faces. So, you know, it, these are hectic times right now. And I know there's lots of angst and and um concern and uh stress, and I understand all that. But if we're gonna solve the problem of five, seven, and two, drastic steps need to be taken, and I think drastic steps are being taken. So for that reason, I too will be opposing the resolutions uh that we are uh considering at this time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Roy Burrell, have you spoken yet? No?
No.
Commissioner Burrell, thank you. I know that Vice President Emerson has spoken, so I just wanted to make sure that I didn't skip him again.
I spoke back when the Huntington people were here.
Thank you, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you. Well, I do want to uh address these resolutions. I um I think we don't do this enough, and I've expressed this before. The only way people in politics at whatever level will hear our voice is that we get the local people involved. It is time for for citizens and voters to stand up against this tyranny. And I consider it tyranny perpetuated by our current president and the uh retribal can, I call it retribal can because they have no backbone that um control Congress. And the US government's history, that has been contrary to the betterment of many of our citizens, vulnerable citizens, especially African-Americans. Ironically, it appears that it has been African-American and other minority groups who are fighting for our democratic republic that has not been necessarily fair to them. When those who have benefited the most, those with privileges, stand by blindly and see our democracy destroyed. We can say what we want, but if you really look at what is actually taking place, and I don't, you know, I know that different people get their information from different sources. But to blindly see us walk off a cliff whenever other foreign countries are basically, especially those with autocratic governments, are basically praising our nation for marching toward autocracy. We see that. And it's it's nothing that is that is being hidden. The only thing is, is that we're not standing up to it. And I want to go back to something that um uh Brother Lazarus said earlier about the seventy percent of 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 uh approval rating on on a lot of these things. I watch the national news every day to one and two o'clock in the morning. The only seventy percent I've seen on 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 things that are taking place now are among the Republican Party. It is not in the general electorate. I have not seen those figures, and 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 if that's the case, I apologize, but I have not seen that. The issue is not the fact that there is waste. There have been a number of of presidents, I know even going back to uh President Reagan about cutting waste. I don't think anybody have a problem with that, wastings in government. But don't cut cover uh, cut waste. And then put it on those who are most vulnerable. This is where your, your welfare is. Your waste is in corporate welfare, and none of them are part of that. And and we need to be conscious of that. All these executive orders, which is part of Project Twenty-Twenty-Five, is being done for a reason. Is being done because it takes a long time for executive orders to be adjudicated in the courts. So by the time they get through the court, and that's not even including that Supreme Court, that we, this partisan Supreme Court that we have, all of our institutions will be gutted. And when they are gutted, we will no longer have a democracy. More clearly, a constitutional democracy. And that is what we need to be concerned about. So while while some of us are being uh uh looking at the shining object like DUI and wokeness and all this kind of carry uh, this kind of stuff, our country is being stolen blind. Much of this stuff is being done to 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 give tax breaks to to the riches of them. I don't, maybe there's a lot of rich people around this this horseshoe. But we need to take that into to strong consideration. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Vice President Emerson.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Madam Clark, would you put up that slide show? And while we're doing that, I'd like to recognize uh a Vietnam War combat war veteran in the audience, Mr. James. If he's standing. James Thompson, ladies and gentlemen, Vietnam War veteran. And his wife, Ms. Irene. And unfortunately, now, Mr. 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 James is blind. But we appreciate his service. And I just want to uh speak with the arts and tell them I have some information relative to uh the effects of the SNAP program in Louisiana, as well as Medicaid and Medicare, so please view that. And basically, when I bring something up, it's it's basically uh because of uh experience, pretty much. Uh, just to correct a little bit what was said, uh, Resolution number eighteen starts out, it says, whereas the current presidential administration has initiated mass firings of federal employees in their second year of service. It says has initiated, okay? Resolution number nineteen, whereas the current presidential administration has cut to or indicated intention to cut the following program. Medicaid, Medicare, SNAP, HEAST, Department of Education, Social Security, Veterans Program, Departments of Defense, and so on. Just wanted to make that clear. If you look at that first photo up there, that's the uh, that's our veterans uh committed. Those are members of our commission that are veterans, as well as I think we had some guests that was in. Uh, one of our guests was a Caddo Parish representative that retired recently from the military. And I can say that her accolades were not given to her on the DEI or preferential treatment or nothing to that. She earned it after, how long of a military career does she have?
Forty years.
Forty years military career. If we go to the next one, please. That's what you see when you come into Caddo Parish, north on I forty-nine, south on I forty-nine. We have a reputation to live up to. And this just did not happen in twenty-twenty-five, when the new administration came in. We started making sure we recognized and gave accolades to our military and veterans back in the nineties. We used to have a webpage with all of the veterans that volunteered that from Caddo Parish, put their name on our parish's webpage. So this isn't anything new just because of this new administration. What we are doing here is a commitment that we have uh worked with since the nineties. Next one, please. That's a plaque, whereas Louisiana is 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 one of a few in the nation, and our constitutional mandate is that we have a Veterans Service Office in each parish. At our National Association of County meetings in Washington DC, the majority of states in the United States are still fighting for that, but we are one up on them. Each parish is mandated to have a Veterans Service Office to take care of our veterans. Next slide, please. And of course, it was uh, our initial building was destroyed by Hurricane Lazarus, I believe it was. And that's the new plaque dedicating where we rebuilt our new Veterans Service Office uh in on on Crestwell. Okay, next. When you look at that, that's a reason for Caddo Parish being veteran-friendly. Caddo Parish advocated at a national convention in Baltimore, Maryland, from the floor of the convention, a resolution that brought attention to the minimal and no mil- no veteran cemetery spaces, not only in Louisiana, but throughout the nation. We got that passed, and what we have now, Louisiana have five veteran cemeteries from that initiative. And that's a drawing point for persons stationed at Barksdale Air Force Base, hundred and eighteen miles south of us at Fort Johnson. It's something that would make them want to retire and come and live in Caddo Parish. Next slide, please. We perpetrated Veterans Resource Centers throughout the nation through NACO. Flag disposal boxes. Where we faucet and try to tell people the importance of patriotism. Bring your rat, you you torn and destroy old flags, put them in, we pick them up, American Legion Post fourteen, American Legion Post fourteen, uh four fifty, we destroy them in the proper protocol, keeping in line with patriotism. Next, please. Look on that stage there, see that gentleman in the gray suit and the yellow attire? That's that gentleman right there, sitting out in the audience, Mr. James Thompson. And look at the young man directly behind uh General, uh, I forget his name. Uh, he was the uh Cyber Command.
General Cotton.
General Cotton. He was our guest speaker and one of our honor program, four-star general. Now, the young man right behind him is Major Justin Thompson. Justin Thompson, a product of Caddo Parish School System, a graduate, I think, of Northwestern State, multiple degrees, including a doctorate. His promotions were not given to him because of DEI, a preferential treatment as to who he was. He earned it. And when you look at all those persons up there holding those plaques, I imagine you probably have uh more military and patriotic service on behalf of this nation than probably the last four or five presidential administrations combined. Next slide, please. Close up, Mr. Riley Scott, for to your right, Purple Heart recipient. Always worked with the veterans here. Everything that you see in reference to veterans in Caddo and Boja Parish, Northwest Louisiana War Veterans Home, Northwest Louisiana Cemetery, Shreveport Boja Veterans Memorial on Clyde Fent Parkway, everything to do with veterans, he is one of the few original gentlemen that's left that makes sure that we live up to Caddo Parish as being veteran-friendly. Next slide, please. A multitude of of others. Next slide, please. Oh, and and let me mention, this is, this year is our sixteenth year, sixteenth year of honoring our military and our veterans. And we also recognize posthumously also. That gentleman's photo you see on the left is Colonel Stephen DePistler. You see all those awards? Colonel DePistler served forty, thirty-eight years in the military, and he volunteered forty-seven years at Barksdale Air Force Base. And our committee is now trying to get a stamp in his honor because of the things that he did. The reason that veterans don't pay taxes on their benefits, Colonel DePistler was an advocate for that and got that through Congress.
Didn't he occupy every rank?
What, that's what you see on the right. He went all the way from a private E-one to sergeant major E-nine, all four warrant officer ranks. He transferred to the Air Force, and he went to full colonel. What's that uh uh oh-six, oh-six?
Outstanding.
Outstanding. I believe he's turning over in his grave when he's seeing here what we are doing here now. He's the only person, the only person in the history of the United States to have a building on a military facility named in his honor while living. That's something. He put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of his own money in an escrow for the Northwest Louisiana Veterans Cemetery. Not not cemetery, I'm sorry, the new Northwest Louisiana Veterans Home. He provided scholarship for uh veterans and military persons, children that had lost their lives. Next slide, please. That young man, that's Admiral, I forget his name. We know we had National Navy Day. They came to Caddo Parish, and we recognize and honor. He's a rear admiral. That's like a brigadier general, right, Mr. Carter? Graduate of Southern University. He did not attain the rank of rear admiral because of who he was, a DEI. He earned it, the same as everybody that was eligible for a promotion to the lec- next level. He he got a second since we, okay, he has a second now. That's Navy. I don't know what that that second would would be. Next slide, please. The lady to the to the right in the white, and the one to the left, she she is the widow of a lieutenant colonel that was a naturalized citizen in the United States. He was scrutinized because he was from Germany, but he volunteered and overcome. And he was a bomber pilot and attained the rank of lieutenant colonel and an honored war veteran, and he wrote a book. And unfortunately, he was, he was blind also. And they liked what we were doing here in Caddo Parish. And that gentleman in the middle with the beard there, that's our uh Assistant Director of Animal Services that gave the speech for our uh memorial service for veterans at Beale Copper Park. She so loved that she decided to have him brought to the Northwest Louisiana Veterans Cemetery and enter it here because she liked the way that we did things and recognized veterans. She supports us each year and come back. Next slide, even though they had a cemetery on Monroe only thirty miles from where she was. Mr. Sam Maddox, a hundred and five years old. Gentleman came down to appear before us, love what we're doing, blessing, World War Two veteran. You can imagine what he ca- he went through during those times. Wasn't bitter. This is why Caddo is veteran-friendly. He utilizes the Overton Brooks VA Medical Center. Next slide, please. Trail is a Jeep Jeep Club and volunteering with us, carrying our honorees in the parade all sixteen years because they like what we are doing on behalf of our military and our veterans. Next slide, please. Independence Bowl. How do we think that people that's coming to the Independence Bowl, where we are, uh, I I think it's named basically for our for our military, when they hear what we are doing against our military and veterans? Next slide, please. The three gentlemen behind, in in the second row, those were the B fifty-two pilots from Barksdale Air Force Base that do the flyover at the Independence Bowl, which would get national notoriety. And I certainly hope, well, anyway. Next slide, please. Independence Bowl steer. Independence Bowl steer. Go on. That's my son. Graduate of LSU, Louisiana Army National Guard, Staff Sergeant E6, been asked to be an officer, he don't want to be an officer, finished high in his military intelligence in the NCO Advanced Academy at Fort Eisenhower, Georgia. Finished first in both leadership and academics. Nobody gave him nothing, he earned. That's Justin Thompson, Major Justin Thompson, and his promotion. This gentleman, Mr. R. Lester Brown, a native of Caddo Parish, I met him up in, at former City Councilman Joe Shine's funeral, that's Joe Shine's brother-in-law, 100 years old, World War II veteran, just come back from France where President Metron awarded him the French Medal of Honor. Very articulate gentleman, and he'll be appearing on my teleconference call on the 27th of this month. This is why Caddo Parish is veteran friendly. Next. Those are some slides from the military and Veteran Steering Committee that I attend at NACO as well as in Tampa, Florida, we're working on issues as far as military sexual trauma, working with military veterans that may have gotten into trouble, drug abuse. Keep going, please.
Vice President Everson, let me get time.
The time has elapsed. The standard allotted time has elapsed.
Okay. I'd just like to move on to the bottom if I may, please.
I make a motion to you.
Thirty more seconds. Okay, hold up right there, back down. President Lincoln, I think Mr. Pressley said it, about what the call of the VA is, what our nation's call is for our military and our veterans, we have a responsibility to take care of them. On up, we love Overton Brooks VA Medical Center. And I can't read the one with President Johnson on there, but I would like to read that for one that can't see it. Can you pull it up? Madam Clerk can read that?
I believe I can read it if, there you go. You got it? "To deny a man his hopes because of his color or race, his religion, or the place of his birth is not only to do injustice, it is to deny America and to dishonor the dead who gave their lives for American freedom."
With that, I end, and we'll deal with it when the resolutions come up. Thank you all.
Thank you. Second time around, Commissioner Ian Lazarus.
I just wanted to say, I think Commissioner Everson gives me too much credit. I didn't know there was Hurricane Lazarus.
I didn't get you, sir.
He said you gave him too much credit, he didn't know it was Hurricane Lazarus.
The Lazarus tore the building down.
Well, it was a hurricane.
Parliamentarian Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share something I was sharing with my colleague because it's really easy to think that these things are just blanket policies and they don't really affect our day-to-day lives. As a military veteran, because of my service, I am eligible for educational benefits. Right now, my education has not been paid for. These type of, just, I'll say knee-jerk cuts to things and into programs cause pause in services, which means my education has not been paid for yet, which means that I'm on the grace of God that my university has not purged me from the rolls. This is usually taken care of much early in January, but here I am about to go into April, and I still don't know if I'm going to have to come out of pocket for my education because of my service. Not only that, and I know that not just anyone who served in the military, right now, I'm sure people can look at their credits, their credit reports and look at their, if you follow and keep up with that, right now, this month, because of certain programs that were cut by the Department of Education that allow repayment programs, I'll just mention one of them. That repayment program went from $7 to $2,170. The net student loan went from $24 to $8,686. These are counted and reflected on our credit reports as negative or mispayments as, it definitely dropped my credit score down because of an educational program that's now cut. Once again, we all recognize that there is waste, but it's not what's being done, it's how it's being done. When you do these things, you have to inform people, you have to prepare them for these upwending of their services that they rely on and depend on each and every day. It's very, very detailed for some people, for some people who don't rely on these services, you won't even miss, you won't even know that these cuts happen. But for people who depend on these services, this is very real, this is very terrifying. The entire VA department, community, white, black, blue, Air Force, Marine, Army, we are all nervous because we don't know what's going to happen to our benefits that we have worked and sacrificed. Some have paid the ultimate sacrifice for their family members to receive those benefits, and they're nervous as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Thomas. The Chair would like to recognize the Clerk at this time before I do my President's report.
Oh, thank you so much. I did just want to give a special shout out and thanks to our very own Michelle Nations, who it is her birthday tomorrow, and I wanted to make sure that we give her this card that's been signed by all the Commissioners and Administration. And we thank you so much, and I want to remind everybody that we've got cupcakes in the back to celebrate.
Thank you.
Speech, speech, speech.
You have anything you would like to say?
Thank you.
All right. A woman of very few words.
Well, she has to document them in the minutes, so.
We hope you enjoy your birthday tomorrow.
And that brings us to the President's report.
All right. So I appreciate the dialogue that we've had on today, and I have some dialogue that I would like to share as well. As I was listening to Pastor Sherri Jake's sermon, she shared these words. James Trusslow Adams coined the phrase "call the American dream," a dream of social order in which each man and each woman shall be able to attain the fullest statue of which they are capable and being recognized by others for what they are regardless of the circumstances of birth or physical condition. We didn't know necessarily that this was the full definition of the American dream, but we took from this the reality that the American dream is ultimately about a few main principles and characters. Maybe that's marriage for some, partnership, a part of the American dream could be educational. Perhaps a dog may be a part of your American dream. And in the 30s, 40s, and 50s, coming off of the heels of the Great Depression, even in the 70s, it sounded really good. But the present conditions of our world and economy has revealed to us that the American dream is not as excessive for some as it is for others. As we begin to see the fluctuating prices in the housing market and the affordability of housing, it is almost unattainable for some, if any, and the interest rates are even crazier. The cost of living is so extreme that the idea of saving up for a house is some that can't even begin to fathom. The meaning are questioning whether the American dream was actually an illusion or a figment of our imagination. So how is it possible that the American dream is available to all? Today, I pose that the American dream is on our agenda. While I watched over the weekend, a little black or brown boy who's giving cancer his best fight, was invited to the White House and honored as a final wish is the same little boy whose health care is under fire. I shared with Commissioner Carthorn as he asked me, as many others did over the weekend, did I hear about the young man in New York who was cured of sickle cell disease? And I told him that I did, as I told a lot of other people who text and called about it. However, I would like to pose a question to you. How many of those who are fighting sickle cell disease do you think have $3 million stored for that type of treatment? I can answer that as a mother, not very many. One of very many steps before you even allowed to apply for the treatment. These are the type of people whose health care is under fire, along with senior citizens, our vulnerable population, who depend on Social Security, Medicaid, extended long-term care, the facilities, our veterans. I became passionate about our veterans because of Mr. Ken Everson. His heart is not for anyone to give him in accolades, but given to those who has given everything, who sometimes often even lay in the trenches to fight for the democracy that we are so proud about. Around this horseshoe, every week, I watch a Commissioner wear a hat with MAGA on it. You're proud of that, whatever that means to you is worn right here, but that's what we don't stand up for. We don't stand up for something that is truly about making America great. Some of us are understandably concerned about how far this segregation and hate of black and brown people has gone. But thankfully, we aren't in the same boat as some of our ancestors were. We are entrepreneurs, we are innovators, we are athletes, we are millionaires, we are billionaires. However, this does not negate our responsibilities because we are the prototype, we still love, we still breathe, and we still live unbothered. But our mandate as elected officials is a responsibility to fight for the voiceless, for the hungry, for the homeless, for the unemployed, the underinsured, the uninsured, our senior citizens, our children. These are the ones who are not prepared to walk through this challenge unbothered. So I say today, as a citizen, as a mother, as an elected representative for the people, in full opposition of these orders, to stop recruiting black people, to serve in the military, to scrub names like Mega Everest and Jackie Robinson's service records from the DOD website, it's no way that we will take these assaults lying down. Some of you who supported Black Lives Matter has opted out in silence today while this administration continuously signs executive orders. With the current state of this country in 2025, the focus is on removing a federal ban signed by President Lyndon B. Johnson in 1965 on companies and contractors from having segregated waiting rooms, restaurants, and whomever is still drinking from water fountains. It's unreal that this is the DEI that you see nothing wrong with. As a public servant, we pray for the soldiers who fight for us. We respect them as we say our pledge of allegiance. But we're not willing to stand up for on a resolution. You should have something to say as a woman because I want you to know that there are certain things that are facts and then there are opinions. Do you know that not a single woman was at the White House meeting on women's health? Not one! It's proof. They were not included in discussing women's health. Imagine that in 2025. So though we celebrate Women History Month, the achievements, how we've evolved, but we certainly have not arrived because we're still in the fight. We cannot afford to be silent. One hand, you want transparency, and the other hand, you approve of an alien act? Do you know that Trump invoked the Aliens Act of 1798, a law written when black people were still enslaved to kidnap and disappear people? This includes and could exclude asylum seekers, legal residents, or even US citizens. If this democracy dies in darkness, it is our responsibility to protect it and shine the light by raising awareness of the suffering that this country is enduring. I'll sleep well tonight knowing that I've done my best to fight for human rights. And some of y'all really need to Google terrorists, and some of you need to wake the hell up. Thank you.
That brings us to the Public Hearing on Zoning Ordinances and Casers, which we do not have scheduled today. The next item is a Public Hearing on Ordinances, where we do have 12.1, a Public Hearing on Ordinance 6523 of 2025, which is establishing a sales tax within the boundaries of the I-49 North Corridor Economic Development District in connection with the pilot agreement with Edgemont Holdings LLC. We do have another public hearing scheduled in this section. Would you like me to open them separately or together?
We could open them together, please.
Okay, the next item is a Public Hearing for Ordinance 6524 of 2025, and that is an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Oil and Gas Fund and Economic Development Fund to provide an appropriation of $100,000 for the Shreveport Classic and otherwise provide with respect thereto. And just as a note, we did add some supporting documents for that, but they are added to the actual ordinance online, not under the public hearing. I think that was just an omission, but those are the, those are the economic impact studies.
Okay. The public hearing is open on Ordinance 6523 of 2025 and Ordinance 6524 of 2025. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or opposition on either of these ordinances? You may come forward at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Jimmy Silvio, my address is 1053 Rochelle, that's in 12 Oaks, Commissioner Rakin. Thank you all. Madam Chair, when I was here last time, you know, I want to thank you for your encouraging words. Caddo Parish is open for business.
Absolutely.
So I thought I'd come back and I actually...
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I do not want to be rude. We do have a point of order we need to hear from Attorney Frazier.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see her on the board. Attorney Frazier?
Madam Chair, it's my understanding that this ordinance is going to be pulled and that this matter is properly taken up under the resolutions where you all are acting as the governing body of the Economic Development District. The only reason I bring it up is because I do not know if you're going to allow Mr. Silvio to speak twice, and I don't want him to lose any time that he may have under the appropriate agenda item.
Thank you. Attorney Frazier, would it be appropriate at this time to make the motion on removing this ordinance?
No, ma'am, you can't do it until you get to the final passage.
Okay. So we would ask you if you would hold your comments until we act as the governing authority for the resolution on this matter.
Okay, so take your chair.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Frazier. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor or against Ordinance 6523 or 6524?
I'm standing here, John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118, to speak to Ordinance 6523 of 2025.
Ms. Glover, do you want to hold your comments to the resolution as well? Because you won't be able to speak twice.
Now, this is a public hearing.
Yes.
So you don't get to speak to the agenda item, no, both items is what you're saying. With the public hearing, we have the right to speak.
Yes, you do.
But to the agenda item, unless we have spoken to it as a visitor, maybe, or comment?
No, ma'am. Because this actual ordinance will be pulled later, after this public hearing, it's going to be offered as a resolution in a different form.
Then let me speak at...
At this time? You're more than welcome.
Because I'm kind of confused with the way you're, the things are being done, and I don't want to, to lose myself, just trying to get an understanding, a clear understanding. Now, if I speak to the public hearing, which is my right.
Yes.
I don't have a right to speak once you pull the ordinance and then you bring in the resolution. Am I understanding that correctly?
Normally, but...
If I could help add some clarity, this is unusual, of cour, you know, because they are performing this role in a, later in the agenda, in a different format that is in, also in a specific function of the Commission. is also in a specific function of the commission, in a specific role that they're performing. And what will happen then is they have two resolutions. Now, typically, our resolutions are adopted in the meeting after their advance to an agenda. That won't be the case today. So this is a little different in a few ways, so it's understandable there would be some confusion. The first item in that section is available for final consideration and adoption today. That's Resolution 1. The Resolution 2 is not to be adopted today. It is not able to be adopted until it meets the advertising requirements set forth in Resolution 1, which would not be able to be met until April 27th. On April 27th...
Seventeenth.
I'm sorry.
April 17th.
Seventeenth, I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction. On April 17th, there will also be an additional public hearing. So there is a public hearing on Resolution 2 that will be held on April 17th. So just if that is helpful.
So what are we having a public hearing about today?
Today is the public hearing that was advertised for the ordinance that is to be removed shortly, but you're not wrong in seeing that we did advertise a public hearing for it today. It is an opportunity.
Yes, Mr. Clerk, I would like to remand to the attorney at this time to make sure that she's in agreement with these statements.
No, I'm, he, what he's saying is correct, but I think in order to keep down confusion, if you go ahead and have the public hearing, you're perfectly fine. Mrs. Silvio can have that, go ahead.
Yes.
Instead of waiting until April.
But then, then you say you can't speak to the item?
No, ma'am. Go ahead. I said that go ahead and proceed to speak earlier, and I just think it...
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear in that my voice wouldn't be not heard at a later point.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You can go ahead and speak.
Okay. Well, thank you all for that, that time, and giving me that explanation, because, like I said, I don't want to do anything out of order. I have been privy to a lot of information these last couple of weeks or so. We recognize through research and then information being shared that there were some mishaps here, some missteps, and those missteps has brought us to where we are. You know, I asked whether or not there were concrete documentation that we actually entered into an agreement with this pilot program. And though we have seen minutes that dictate that, there were discussions, there was never really an agreement in writing that was done. Now, we have gone back and we have seen other writings and other minutes, and now we're here. So what we're asking for us to do, what I'm asking for us to do based on where we are with this discussion altogether is that we do do what we say we're going to do without me being more confused than I am right now, because I really don't know what we're doing right now. I really don't. And speaking to the public hearing, because I don't have my heart and mind convinced that I know where we are, then I need to understand where we are and definitely where we're going. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. In that case, would the gentleman be allowed to speak relative to this? You may come forward now, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Jimmy Silvio at 1053 Rochelle, 12 Oaks. I was kidding about that earlier. So thank you all for being here. I had submitted a proposed development map for everybody to look at. I don't know if we can...
Point of information, this nation. Can you please show that for me, please?
So I thought I'd come down and kind of explain where all of our tax money is spent, our credit, tax credit money. This, in that a way, we can, we can, you know, dispense with any, you know, any misinformation or people not able to follow along, so. Are we going to put it up on the...
It's coming now.
All right. Well, what we're doing here is I have a engineering drawing that covers approximately 62 acres around the facility at Highway 2 and I-49, known as the TA Express. So what we're proposing is, that's it right there, what we're proposing is it's a development that's going to eventually, with time, it's going to cost about $13 million in land purchase, engineering, topo maps, geotech, and site prep. So we already have a traffic engineering study completed. We have, we have already approximately built around the facility all the utilities. So this is, this is where the utilities become important, all the infrastructure. So if you notice at the top, the Highway 2, we've already completed all the turn lanes, all the highway expansion, decel lane, drainage, and the, and the water pond right there in the middle to cover all the low areas that were, that was a flood problem before. So approximately in Phase 3 and 4, we're thinking it's going to be about a $25 million investment to build up over the next few years. So we've already had discussions with various groups about an RV park, 18-wheeler repair service, possibly a Taco Bell or McDonald's. I've been talking to Sabaro. The current owner has expressed interest eventually in a small hotel at some point. That's basically when Cracker Bell shows up. So we are looking into a strip center right now at the, at the west part of the, of the facility. So what that's going to do is put a little retail there, and we're hoping to attract, we've been, we've been talking to Curtis Joseph, I think a lot of you know Curtis, but he has a contact with Oshers that may be interested in putting a medical facility there, or a quick care or something. So we'd actually provide some medical services in that area that's badly needed, especially for the seniors. So we put all the infrastructure in this plan, so now this development could happen, because everything's there. We've done the power upgrades, we've done the fiber optic, the water from the town we've paid for. So all the dirt work is, on the road is complete. So the only thing we have to do is figure out some sewer, sewer lift stations, and that's it. So this is ready to go. So this is built for the future. This is not, these kind of developments don't happen overnight. They take time, and the parish has not paid a dime for this. So we've actually been averaging about $20,000 a month, I think, in taxes that comes back that we've been paying. So the parish hasn't spent any money on this. This is all out of our pocket. So this is the reason we want our money back, so we can, we can expand the facility. We think that Robert Nance Park, which is right on the other side of, on the, on the west side of Houston, needs to be refurbished. We think that that expansion at Black Bayou Lake, which is known for bass fishing, is hurt in attendance because of the parking area. It's kind of dilapidated and old and too small. So we propose going after the dollars across the state lines in Texas and Arkansas. So we need to expand the parking, build an additional launch ramp, build a covered public gathering place, and upgrade the restrooms. We think that's going to be about a $650,000 investment. But we think, our calculations are right, we think that that will return to the village of Houston about $26,000 to $32,000 annually. So we also think that would be an attractive retiree community. So now I guess we need to address the, the issue of the attacks on us from Commissioner Crackman. So with all the money we brought to Houston, when it was on the verge of going bankrupt, which includes all the monthly sales tax payments, new permit fees, commercial water bills that we're paying, and we even secured a $100,000 grant for the town's park and walking trails. So the town supports us, and matter of fact, Tuesday night at the, at the town hall, the town rallied around us. So they're in full support. So, I mean, all the, you know, all the insults and the insinuations of this corruption thing has got to stop. It's really ridiculous. So I can't figure out if, why would anybody want to undermine a desperately needed business and fails to see that travelers on I-49 will spend their money in Arkansas or south of their district? It makes no, no sense. That's part of the problem, not the solution. So it's really upsetting to be here, because we've been on, you know, under attack for the last few weeks over this. But the guys that, you know, I questioned his letter from, from Danny McCormick. The reason I do that is because this raid happened with no local law enforcement involved, and all of a sudden he comes up with a letter saying that, you know, there was a raid conducted, and there was no local law enforcement involved. So, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, they're doing raids in New York and Chicago and Denver and now Houston. It just, it just doesn't add up. So I support immigration reform. Apparently, the rules have changed for the administration. We thought the guys are fully vetted by immigration, naturalization. They have alien numbers. I talked to the attorney, he said they were undocumented workers and undocumented individuals. They were not arrested, they're detained. According to his letter, they're deported. Well, they're not. I had, I visited with them a few days back. I went to see them. So they're waiting, they're, they're waiting for their work permits to come through. They have a hearing in April, so we may actually get these guys back. So it's just disheartening that, that all this controversy is going on and ruining these guys' lives, and it wasn't, it's not necessary. But I think we brought enough back to this, you know, to that community up there. You know, I think we've brought a lot of money, we've helped, helped the town. I mean, there's not a lot more we can do, except span and go on and move, move forward with a bigger project. So, but we've calculated all this stuff, so if the, you know, if the parish sees this like we see it as a vision, I mean, it's going to work. Todd Hopkins, you know, we absolutely wish he was here to see this. I mean, we, the road to the south, we want to name, you know, Todd Hopkins Boulevard in honor of him, his, you know, his legacy, you know, pretty much. Of course, the road to the east will be named Chris Crackman Road, so, but it's a joke for you. Anyways.
We have one commissioner on the board at this time, Commissioner Roy Barrell.
I just, I just have a point of clarification here.
Yeah.
And that is, is this boundary that we see here, that is the Tiff District that's affected by the 2% only?
Originally, that whole tract of land and the other corners were the Tiff District, originally. But then it came back, I guess there was another vote, and I don't know if Todd was in, Todd was in that or not, because this has been three years. That's why I'm here, because it's been three years, kind of refresh everybody's memory. But now it's just inside, underneath our store, the roof of our store, which is 86 under square feet. So now it's just, just that area.
So it's only the business location, not these lots?
Not the lots, not the lots.
Okay, my second question is...
That's my understanding, so.
If you would, if you would hold your questions to the final passage, Mr. Commissioner Barrell. Okay.
Whenever I can get clarification, Madam.
Hold on to it for me, okay? Thank you. All right? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay, I'd like to say one thing, though, if I, if I might. If anything comes of the day, I mean, you know, I question myself, why, why would I even, even attempt to even come back up there and do anything and just go somewhere else? Well, when I, I look at her and the citizens there, and I see her, you know, Commissioner Thomas is, is obviously taking a few hits on this, you know, that's, that's why I'm staying. That's why I think I'm going to ride this out. We're going to fight for this, we're going to make this a reality. It may take a little while, but we can make it happen. If anything happens, I really wish you guys would, at the end, would shake hands and let's get on with regular business. This is ridiculous. We need to work together to get, to get stuff done. This is not a, this is not that hard. We can all work this out and be friends. I mean, really. I mean, just, let's just jump on board and get, make this happen, because it's going to take us a while to build up the population to, to fill all these jobs, and this is where it starts. This doesn't happen overnight. I mean, this is going to be good, good-paying jobs, it's going to be better housing, this is going to be more taxes, you know? So anyways, if anybody has any questions, you know, I'm here, so.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor or against?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome, ma'am.
I'm Kim James from the village of Houston. I want to say today, first and foremost, Commissioner Crackman, this is not an attack on you. This is from my heart and from what I have come to conclusion in my investigation and my homework that I have done. First, I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak, and regarding this concern surrounding the 2% sales tax at the TA truck stop in Austin, I am here to present factual information that's backed by evidence. As you can see, I have all the evidence here, not but just allegations. A public hearing, public hearings have been held to discuss the TA truck stops development from its inception to its completion. These meetings involved the IDB Board, the EDD Board, the Caddo Commission Board, and the Village of Houston's town meetings. At these meetings, each of these meetings were attorneys that represented each of the boards. The ordinances and the resolutions passed during these sessions demonstrate that this development was not done in a back room, and it was made with the people that have the authority to do it. Moving on to Webster's Dictionary's definition of corporate welfare. As government assistance, its definition states, "As government assisted, provided to large companies." However, this 2% sales tax is not a government funding. It is a tax on the products that are sold at this TA truck stop, intended to reimburse the investor for his investment in the infrastructure cost. This clearly indicates that we are not dealing with corporate welfare. The revenue from this tax will solely be used to repay Edgemont Holdings for infrastructure expenses that could have been funded by the state, could have been funded by Caddo Parish, could have been funded by the Village of Houston, but they weren't. Edgemont Holdings took their money, and they brung the infrastructure to this area, not only for their benefit, but for any future businesses that may come. This money is not going to cover the cost of building the truck stop or the property to which it sits on, just the infrastructure in which was brung. Edgemont Holdings has invested the, has invested in infrastructure for the entire Tiff District, which includes electric, water, gas, fiber, and the road services along the I-49 corridor. It is crucial to note that these utilities remain owned by their respective companies. SWEPCO still owns the electric, the Village of Houston still owns the water, CenterPoint still owns the, the gas, and Lumen still owns its fiber.
Motion to extend for two minutes.
A second. It's been a motion by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas to extend by two minutes, second by the chair. Is there any opposition? It passes by acclamation?
May I continue?
Yes.
These contracts with these companies confirm that the maintenance of the infrastructure is their responsibility following its completion. So that means that Edgemont Holdings is not going to be in control of any, anything. The companies are going to be in control of, which they own. How can Houston grow without investors like Edgemont Holdings? Their investment in infrastructure not only benefits the TA truck stop, but any future businesses that may come to this area. And as Mr. Silvio had said, we do have plans to extend the area, and also have plans to do some work around the Black Bayou. This past weekend, we had a large bass tournament there. There was hardly any parking. So we definitely need parking, and that's something we're going to be coming and asking money for, some parking for that, for that area. However, potential investors may hesitate if they perceive that the district's leadership is opposed to growth. During the workshop meeting on March 17th, 2025, which was just past Monday, Commissioner Chris Crackman referenced a letter from State Representative Danny McCormick, suggesting that TA employees are primarily immigrants, that that's all they employ, that's all employees that was there. I quote him saying that. This claim is misleading. Several of the employees come from Houston, Myra, Rhodesia, Gillum, Blanchard, and other nearby communities. I know this... I know this firsthand because I assisted in insuring these people jobs at the TA. I'll let them know when the workshops were coming. Commissioners, I pose a question to you. Were you elected to serve for the best interest of your district, including the businesses, or to advance your political career? I understand that this is Chris, uh, Commissioner Crackman's district, and I understand that these were your constituents, who helped vote you in office. But Commissioner Crackman, this is my town, my residents, my friends, and my family, that are being negatively, negatively impacted by all of this that's going on, and I ask you to please stop. I urge you and honor the commitment, I urge you to honor the commitment made by the previous, by the previous board, specifically the late Todd Hopkins, who was a strong advocate for this project, as well as the commitments from several of the board members sitting here today that was on that board. You all shared that vision. If you hadn't of you wouldn't have voted for it. Lastly, I want to thank Commissioner Thomas for stepping up for the Village of Houston, which we're not even in your district. You done what my conditioner, Commissioner would not do. Because of you stepping up, Houston has a chance, a glimpse of growth. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else to speak in favor or against on these ordinances. I declare this public hearing on ordinance sixty-five twenty-three and sixty-five twenty-four closed.
Thank you that, uh, we.
We have no zoning ordinances for final passage consideration at the moment, so we'll move forward to ordinances for final passage. Uh, the first item fourteen point one is the item that we were just discussing. Um, it was explained this is likely to be removed from the agenda at this point. Uh, this is ordinance sixty-five twenty-three of twenty twenty-five establishing a sales tax within the boundaries of the I-49 North Corridor Economic Development District in connection with the pilot grant, I'm, I'm sorry, the pilot agreement with Edgemont Holdings LLC.
I have a motion by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas and a second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, I would like to, um, per the advice and, um, recommendations from, um, legal, um, I will pull this ordinance, um, in lieu, um, that it will be supported, um, and the issue will be resolved, um, by items twenty, um, point three one and twenty point three two. Um, that is Resolution one of twenty, twenty twenty-five and Resolution two of twenty-five, which will be adopted on April seventeenth. Um, and I urge my, I ask my colleagues to please support twenty point three point one. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to see it, at what point could I ask my question, or is, is this, or that's later?
You want to exit during the resolution?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. I see no other discussion?
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification. Whereas, legal, you're, you're recommending that we pull this from, from the agenda right now?
Um, yes, Commissioner, the items that are for resolution by this body acting as the governing board of, of the Economic Development District are the appropriate, um, vehicle to, um, proceed in this matter, because acting as that particular body, you don't have any lawmaking authority. So it would not be an ordinance.
Commissioner Tom, Thomas recommends, or he made a motion to pull it, so a yes would pull it as per legal's recommendation, correct?
Affirmative.
Make sure we all are on board with that. Thank you.
A yes would approve to remove it, and a no would, um, it would fail. Okay. Okay, please vote.
Okay, and that motion, uh, is, uh, that motion passes, which removes that ordinance. That is eleven in support, none in opposition, and one, uh, absent at the moment. That brings us now to the consideration of fourteen point two, which is ordinance sixty-five twenty-four of twenty twenty-five. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Oil and Gas Fund and Economic Development Fund to provide an appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars for the Shreveport Classic and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Uh, again, as was mentioned earlier, you do have the requested economic impact studies, uh, on your electronic agenda.
All right. It's been moved by the Chair and seconded by Commissioner Ron Carthor. Commissioners, this is a small investment to support a huge economic driver in Caddo Parish. Um, this football classic in economic impact studies are over one million dollars, which does not include some of the ancillary activities or events that Grambling State University will host during the weekend of this game, um, like Battle of the Bands, Alumni Gala, Comedy Show, High School Day, and Student Scholarship Luncheon. I ask for your support on this item. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Ms. Barnett, can you comment on the, the economic, uh, impact study? Do you feel comfortable that this, that, that this uh, game would, would truly bring a millionish dollars into our community?
Asking me or Erica?
You.
Okay.
I'm asking the finance, I'm asking the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Sometimes people say, and I, and she looked like she was about to talk, so I was just being respectful to her. I am not an economic development study guru. Um, I did look at them, uh, and the people that provided them. I'm, I'm confident that they have the information available to them. As far as the number of people it draws, I'm, that. I think historically those games have drawn a good crowd, but I mean, I, I can't really speak to.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Barnett, or Ms. Bryant, do you want to add to that?
Yes, sir. She covered it. Um, I think we'll rely on the, the persons that are, have the expertise to develop these reports and have to rely on the information that's.
And that did, that it, that did indicate over a million dollars in positive economic impact to our community, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. See no other commissioners on the board to speak? Please vote. I'm sorry, Commissioner Burrell.
I was just gonna tell John, if he would invite his district to the game, we'll probably increase that number of votes and to the party.
Okay, please vote. I thought we were voting. Oh, it went up.
Okay, and that motion does pass with ten in support, one in opposition, uh, and one absent, and brings us to the, uh, next items. Uh, we do not have any zoning ordinances for introduction, but our standard ordinances for introduction, we do have one today, and that is to introduce ordinance sixty-five twenty-five of twenty twenty-five. That's an ordinance dedicating fifty percent of the income generated from the parish share of sports wagering receipts to the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund and amending the general fund and the E. Edward Jones Housing Trust Fund for sports wagering revenues and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Uh, and just as a additional note, there has been a long-range, uh, planning committee scheduled, uh, to address this item, as well as, uh, some, um, documents to provide some context and background have been requested and will be distributed to the, uh, members of the commission for, uh, reference. Uh, that brings us now to consideration of work session minutes. And today you have the work session minutes from your March seventeenth meeting.
It's been moved by Parliamentarian Thomas, seconded by Commissioner John Paul Young. Parliamentarian Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, thank you, ma'am. Um, is it appropriate to, um, do we, never mind. No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner John Paul Young? Okay, please vote.
I believe Commissioner Jones is out of the office, I mean, out of the chamber at the moment. Okay, thank you. Uh, that gives, that, that motion carries with nine in support, one in opposition, uh, and two out of, uh, the, uh, two absent. Uh, that brings us to resolution, uh, to be considered for adoption today. Again, these are the resolutions of the Caddo Parish Commission, not the resolutions, uh, specific to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk. I just wanted to clarify if Commissioner Grace Ann Blake, um, meant to vote no on the work session minutes. Was there something that needed correcting?
No.
You just woke up.
I messed up. No, I, I was thinking we were voting on something else, and I realized we weren't.
Would you like to ask for?
I would like to have it corrected. Thank you.
Okay, we will have the record reflect it. Commissioner Blake, so that, uh, is ten in support, two in opposition, uh, that would.
You just ready to push that no, Blake?
That brings us to resolutions for consideration today. Again, I did just want to clarify, this does not include the two resolutions, uh, that are specific to the commission acting in its capacity as the director of the I-49, uh, Tiff. So these are the standard resolutions, starting with Resolution sixteen of twenty twenty-five. That is a resolution to authorize the Caddo Parish Administrator to approve the assignment Bill of Sale and Conveyance of State Agency Leases Number two-two-two-six-five and two-two-two-six-six from Cypress Energy Partners LLC.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Ron Carthor and a second by Commissioner John Atkins. Commissioner Carthor, would you like to speak on your motion?
I would defer to Commissioner Atkins.
Okay, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Will. If it pleases the, uh, the maker of the motion, I propose that we, uh, englovo Resolution sixteen and seventeen and adopt those two resolutions. They both have to do with, uh, natural gas leases.
Would you accept their friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yes, it's been accepted. Okay, all right. Please vote. Englovo and adopting Resolution sixteen and seventeen.
And Commissioner Thomas, it looks like it didn't log your vote. Thank you. That gives us eleven in support, none in opposition, and one absent, and moving forward to Resolution eighteen of twenty twenty-five, uh, which is a resolution opposing the mass firings of federal employees and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
All right. It's been motioned by Vice President Emerson, seconded by Parliamentarian Thomas. Vice President Emerson, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, ma'am. I think enough has been said, but I would like to call for a roll call verbal vote, please.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. Um, I would like to vote yes, um, and declare aye.
Okay. Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you. Um, I, I chose to wait instead of saying all this and communicating, so.
The floor is yours.
Be the appropriate time to do so. Um. I, um. I think many of us have said we agree that there doesn't need to be, um, any unnecessary waste that makes sense. Again, it's not what you're doing, it's how it's executed. And I think the way everything is being executed is terrifying people. It's making people very uncomfortable. And I think the problem is, is, as I've said before, we're living in such a tenuous political climate that we're not listening to one another. Everybody's just saying what they want to say, and no one's listening. I think we agree on more stuff than we actually realize if we take the time to listen. And the problem is, is everybody's got their red or blue hat on, their black or white hat on, and we're just choosing not to listen. We're not thinking about the big picture. There are gonna be cuts under any administration. We can throw out all the stats and numbers that we want to, but there's something that is an absolute fact that while we were in this meeting, an executive order was signed to dismantle the Department of Education. The Department of Education, if many of you did not know, funds special education programs. And I'm gonna fight with special education every time. Every time. I know y'all get tired of me preaching. I do not care. That is who I am. It's what I was called to do, and I'm gonna die doing it. When the Son of Man comes, he's gonna separate the sheep from the goats. Gonna put one on the left and one on the right. He's gonna say, "Those of you who have clothed me, taken care of me when I was hungry, gave me somewhere to lay my head, you've done the right thing. Those of you who have not, you've done the wrong thing." And I'm paraphrasing. I could read it verbatim, but I'm not gonna get into all of it today. Some of us are too uncomfortable doing the wrong thing, not taking care of the least of these. It says in the parable, "Well, Lord, when, when do we do these things to you? What you have done to the least of these, you've done unto me." And we're okay sitting by with reckless, unorganized cuts and dismantling departments that are affecting people who need these services. Special education is needed. These babies can learn. These adults can learn. But if you take away the, the funding that they need for these programs, where do you leave them? It's not right, y'all. It, that is not right. Nobody up here is saying we don't need to cut anything. We need to do it the right way. And I think that's the point that's being missed. No one is saying that we don't need to cut anything. It just needs to be done correctly. And it's reckless. Nothing has been planned out. Nothing has been explained thoroughly to the American citizens where we can understand it. Everybody's not an attorney, and the majority of your voters are not as educated as the people that they elect to represent them. That's why they elect those people to go speak for them, because they are not able to articulate the things they need and they want for themselves. So they trust and lean and depend on us to be able to come up here, those in DC, to articulate those things for them. And I'm just, I have a problem when people are okay and agree with the things that the administration is doing that are hurting those that cannot help themselves. See, we, we look at the surface level, and we don't think about all the people that are affected when you really get down to the deep of it. I bet a lot of people didn't know that the Department of Education funds special education programs. A lot of that does not come from states. There are certain states they can afford it. There are states in the Union they cannot afford to fund their schools. That's why they had the Department of Education. And the most rural states are the ones who need the mon, the money the most. And some of those states are in the South. Some would argue the most uneducated part of America. You can't compare the education on the East Coast to the education in the South. They are killing us. Put students in Virginia up against students against Louisiana. We would be embarrassed. But that's what you get when you put a CEO of World Wrestling Entertainment over education in the first place, who's never taught in the classroom, who's never been a high school principal, who's never served in education, but yet they get to serve as the Secretary of Education. And I'm supposed to sit by and not say anything? I don't care who the president is. I've disagreed with things that Joe Biden did, Barack Obama, George Bush, Bill Clinton. I can't tell you what Reagan did, because I was about three years old when he was president. We gotta stop doing foolish stuff and do what makes sense. Maybe one day we'll get past our political differences and stop posturing ourselves to play these games and do what people need to be done. Maybe one day we will. I don't know when that day will come, but I pray that it comes soon, because people are struggling. And it's hard for some of us to empathize with that when we've never had to struggle. I was poor and I didn't know it, because my mother did what she needed to do to take care of us. Had no clue that we didn't have the things that we needed. I didn't know I wasn't wearing name brand clothes till I got to middle school. I just joke with, with some of our folks here about how much I hate the middle school, because that's when I found out how poor I was. Because other kids who had, if I could have a minute or two.
Motion to extend for one minute and thirty seconds.
That's when I found out by folks who had a little money that we didn't have any. But guess what? I started those jeans down like they were name brand, because you could, poor is almost a mindset, but it is a reality for a lot of people. It's not, oh, poor is just a mindset. It's a reality for a lot of people. It's what they've been handed down. It's generational curses that have yet to be broken. And some of us will be surprised, some of the people in our communities and districts actually need these services that we are advocating to be cut. actually need these services that we are advocating to be cut. When I was in Grand State University, I found out just how many people needed SNAP benefits. I was raised to believe that almost 100% of those people look like me. That ain't true. They all look like all of us in this room. See, poor ain't a color, it's a condition. Whether you're white or black, doesn't matter. White folk need SNAP benefits, black folk need SNAP benefits, because they're poor. They need social security, because they cannot work anymore. And they need some income coming in. And everybody didn't have enough money to save out of their chicks for retirement. So you gonna vote how you want to vote, I need to get that off my chest, because people want to talk about people being Christians and stuff and all that. Well, you know how people know that you're a disciple of Christ? By the way you love one another. That's fact and that's in the Bible. I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young? Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say that these are all national issues, and for the benefit of the public, no Caddo Parish Commissioner has special knowledge about national issues. One of the things I like about this job, I'll just speak for myself now, is that we all have special knowledge about our districts and about our parish, and if we live in the city or a village, about those places. The thing I like about this job is that it allows me to see the actual problems that are going on in my community that are under my authority or near my authority, which I can use that authority to try to help remedy. When we put resolutions about national issues on our agenda, they're not really agenda items, in my opinion, because agenda means things that need to be done, and these are not the things that we are tasked with doing. We can certainly speak about issues that we care about, but each of us, especially myself, is limited by the information that we consume, and that is a factor of the information that is available to us, but also the information that we are willing to consume. If you don't listen to news sources that upset you, you don't get the whole picture. If you don't listen to news sources that disagree with you, you don't get the whole So in sum, I would say this type of resolution gives us all a good opportunity to become emotional and speak grandly, but nobody is gonna read them and nobody's gonna consider what they say, because this is not our purview and it's not gonna come to the notice of the people to whom they're directed. So I would like to encourage all of us to notice and think really hard and creatively about the problems, which are very, very many, in Caddo Parish, the problems which are very, very many in Shreveport, in our own districts. And when we have solved or made earnest, hard attempts to solve all of those problems, then we can all get together and discuss the enormous amount of information that would be required to have an intelligent and reasonably defensible position about national issues over which we have no jurisdiction or special information. Thank you.
Vice President Epperson?
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Vice President Epperson?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to let you know that this is an issue for me. I vote for the president, I vote for congressman, I vote for senator, I vote for state rep, I vote for state senator. So whatever they do, it's under my purview. Now, I can't speak for anybody else. And I'm articulate in what I do, I do research. And a lot of things I put on here, I have lived through them. I work with people. I would be remiss if I would, if I'm on here and go to Washington DC, been gone for 25 years, go to Baton Rouge Legislature Conference for 25 years and wouldn't know what's going on. So I wouldn't want to tell you that, but I know what's going on. I'm educated and I listen to my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
First time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, I have to disagree with this too, Madam Chair, about these national issues, that we don't address them here at a local level. All politics, again, is local. Whether you're dealing with houses, housing, jobs, safety, any of these issues, they are national issues, they are discussed on a national basis. I don't believe that these national issues don't affect us locally. That doesn't even make sense to me. I mean, that doesn't even compute at all, because everything that they're fighting about on a national level is based upon what happens at a local level. Now, whether this resolution would just be read by the people here on a local level, I don't think so. It's my understanding that those resolutions should at least go to the state, if not to our congresspeople. Maybe I should ask that question, or can I ask that question? If so, I can understand Commissioner Young's position. But we as a local body, dealing with local issues with our local constituents, shouldn't make it beyond the commission. And if we don't agree, we should be at Johnson's office protesting, we should be at Cleo Field's office protesting, we should be at Kennedy's office protesting, whoever else, because they affect us locally. And we should all take it to heart. That's why we have these yahoos up there doing what they're doing, because we don't take it literally. It affects our people every day, it affects my family every day. That's the reason why I can be emotional about it. I look at it from the standpoint of how it's gonna affect my kids and grandkids. That's why I'm emotional about it. And just by discussing it here, I'm not discussing it here, I'm picking up the phone and I'm calling and asking, "What are you doing?" And this is on a state level, because I've been there. And on a national level, I've worked with those people. They'll listen if you pick up the phone and call. But to say that national issues is not affecting us here locally, I don't agree with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Yes, point of information?
Madam President, I'd just like for everyone to look at the, be it for the resolve at the last of each resolution, that they be forwarded to the President of the United States, Louisiana Federal Congressional Delegation, Caddo Delegation, Louisiana State Legislature, Louisiana Police Juror Association. Thank you.
Thank you. In addition to that, I also would like to add that every resolution that we pass has merit. There is power amongst us around this horseshoe. Now, if you've been taught otherwise, then I think that you should further your knowledge on what a resolution actually stands for. Commissioner Atkins, have you spoken? I'm sorry, Commissioner John Atkins?
I'll be brief, just a reminder of five, seven and two. Five trillion dollars in revenue, seven trillion dollars in expenses, leads to a $2 trillion deficit. The country is unsustainable at that trajectory. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I have Commissioner Ron Carthen on the board, his tablet is not working.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, it'd be real easy to sit here and pontificate the rest of the evening if I chose to, but instead I will call for the question.
Second.
We still have two Commissioners on the board, one of which has not spoken yet. Commissioner Ed Lazarus?
Call for the question.
Are you on the board for that as well? Okay. We have a motion on the floor to call for the question, and we have a second and a third and a fourth. So no one else, please vote.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I know your system is down, you're obviously the maker of the motion.
Okay. And Commissioner, Vice President Epperson did ask for a verbal vote as well.
And Commissioner Crackman, I'm sorry.
This is for a call for the question.
This is a call for the question. Okay, that motion carries with ten in support, one in opposition and one absent. And there was a request for a voice vote, so as we don't do these often, just as a reminder, we'll go in order of districts and I'll just call out and it would be yea or nay. By the way, this is the same as casting votes electronically, the requirement is the same, it's just a different way of collecting the vote. So Commissioner Crackman?
No.
And Commissioner Greg Young is absent. Commissioner Thomas?
Yea.
Commissioner John Paul Young?
No.
Commissioner Burrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yea.
Commissioner Gage Watts?
Yes.
Commissioner Blake?
No.
Commissioner Atkins?
No.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazarus?
No.
And Commissioner Epperson?
Yes.
Okay, I believe that motion, unless I've miscounted, I believe that motion does not carry. It has six votes in support, five in opposition and one absent. And thank you, it was logged in and that is accurate. Okay, that brings us to the next item on your agenda, which is Resolution Number 19 of 2025. That is a resolution opposing cuts to national aid programs and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice President Ken Epperson, second by Commissioner Stefan Jones. Vice President Epperson, would you like to speak on your motion?
No, we've heard enough discussion. Anyone else would, they'd prefer to do so.
Absolutely. Forgive me, I won't be long, I love y'all out there.
Take your time, you have the floor.
As it relates to national issues, didn't we have a resolution about something with Ukraine?
Yes.
When I first got on this commission?
Yes.
Who authored it?
Commissioner Burrell.
Commissioner Burrell, right. What was the vote on it? Did it pass?
Yes.
It did pass, right? So we've dealt with national issues and I think we were asked by the president at that time, if I'm not mistaken, to wear blue and gold to the meeting to stand with Ukraine.
Yes.
Now, what's good for the goose is good for the gourd. We can't be inconsistent and come up in here and do one thing and then come and turn around and do this and try to make me look like I'm foolish. I wouldn't remember that we've stood on national issues before. I don't understand why, listen, y'all gotta find somebody else to play those type of games with, because I'm just not that person. Now, one of my colleagues was real passionate a couple of weeks ago about something happening in his district. Nobody told him to not be passionate, no one told him to not call people meth heads, none of that. Pull the vote record, I believe you have more people standing with you who don't have your political affiliation than you did for those who have your political affiliation. So I want y'all to remember that type of stuff when you play these type of games. Go pull your voting records when you have stuff on the agenda and people look at it and vote it down, but other people staying with you when you're passionate about something. To call folks out for being passionate and wanting to stand on issues that affect us. How many veterans is Carthen, Epperson, Thomas, and Commissioner y'all are all veterans? Am I missing anybody? I'm speaking for Commissioners, but thank you for serving, Ms. Glover. It affects all of us. So I need to get that off my chest. I don't think that's fair, if we're gonna talk about passion. Give people the space to say what they feel needs to be said and don't be critical when you choose to be, especially with the same folks who have stood with you when you needed somebody to stand with you the most. I yield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to point out that no one on this commission has voted across party lines more frequently than I have. I think that is a good thing, because it shows that I have an open mind and I'm willing to listen to people who disagree with me on some issues, but agree with me on other issues. When we voted about Ukraine, I did not think that it was relevant to Caddo Parish business. And I told the maker of the motion that, and he amended his motion to include more language about people living in Ukraine, or people from Ukraine living in Caddo Parish in order to make me feel slightly comfortable voting for it. But it had nothing to do with Caddo Parish business at the time, and it still doesn't. I also have not told people not to be emotional or use grand language. I have only pointed out that that is what these resolutions lead to. I prefer for us to focus on our districts and fixing the actual, very important, vital, crucial and sometimes deadly problems that face Caddo Parish and the city of Shreveport. And I'm not criticizing anyone. I'm only saying I don't support these because they're not Caddo Parish business. I know that federal policies affect Caddo Parish, but these resolutions do not affect federal policy. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Burrell?
Madam Chair, I just want to address this issue. I know my colleague, Commissioner Atkins, he's a dollar man, money man. He's a dollar man, money man.
Ms. Glover?
For Ms. Glover. But this national debt we are talking about, and all of these cuts that's being made and firing of these people, federal employees, these cuts are not being made to reduce government. That's the biggest crock of bull I've ever heard of in the time that I've been in politics, is to provide enough money to get the tax breaks for these millionaires that want this $4 trillion, $4 trillion in the budget. That's what it's for. So all of this other stuff to me is just a bunch of malarkey, because again, when you're cutting the deficit, and then you're gonna turn around and cut the employees of the IRS so that they won't go after the dollars for these billionaires who don't want to pay their taxes. And I can't understand, you know, I know my fellow colleague is probably pretty wealthy, I can't talk about that, but I don't think all of us are in that boat where the taxes that we wind up paying is more than taxes of billionaires, and you make an excuse for them, because you say, "Oh, they are the job creators." And no, they're the ones who are putting us in poverty. That's where that is. So I really need to say that, as Commissioner Jones was saying, to get it off my chest, because that's the biggest crock of bull I've heard in the 25 years I've been in politics. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron Carthen?
Thank you, Madam President. Thing is, as I look at these resolutions, I know we're on 18 dash four, and you know, listening to what some of my colleagues are saying, this is very close and personal to me, because some of my constituents have called me and shared with me that they have been fired, they have been pulled off the road as 18-wheel truck drivers because of things that are happening in this nation at this particular time. So please understand, if some people might be closer to this than others, I respect your opinions, but the thing is, again, this is affecting people in District 10 right now today. And maybe had it been on a resolution opposing the mass firing of federal employees in Caddo Parish or something of this nature, maybe some people might have been able to get it. But the thing- But the thing is, we have to remember, is that I promise you, as we continue down this road, regardless of your political affiliation, regardless of what you think about another person's view, please, 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 attempt to understand, and maybe even ask the question, how is it or why is it that you have an investment in this particular thing? Because I promise you, any one of us sitting around this horseshoe, when our constituents are affected, we are affected. Because, once again, when people lose jobs, I don't know what's gonna happen next. You know, we talk about the crime, the this, that, of things of this nature. And again, none of these people are criminals in nature, and I pray that none of them become that. But the thing is, again, with this resolution, what it caused me to think about, what is it that I can do? One of the things, as you know, I asked the CEO to look at a job fair, okay? Because people are getting fired, you know? People are, things are happening here in this country. I don't care who the president is at this particular time. When it affects an individual, it affects me. And particularly if it's a person within my respective district and within Caddo Parish. So once again, I ask everybody, just take the time, pump the brakes. It haven't happened to you yet, but just hold on, it's coming. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Gray Sandblake.
Call for the question.
Second.
All right, we have a call for the question. It's been motion and second.
Is that possibly by acclamation?
My vote is a no.
Okay.
We've been talking all night, might as well keep on talking.
Are we voting?
Yes.
Yes, this is a call for the question. Commissioner Burrell, Blake, and Lazarus. I'm sorry, Kaufman, your system is down, but you're in the affirmative. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas, did you... There, thank you. May I just...
And once this passes, remember we'll be doing a voice vote for this next one.
Okay, that does carry. That's seven in support, four in opposition, and one absent. And so that brings us to the voice, and again, this is, I believe, the request still carries for this to be a voice vote, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start with District 1, Commissioner Crackman. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner John Paul Young.
No.
Commissioner Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Yes.
Commissioner Blake.
No.
Commissioner Atkins.
No.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lazarus.
No.
And Commissioner Emerson.
Yes.
Okay, and those votes are locked in. That motion does fail with six in support, five in opposition, and one absent. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is Resolution 20 of 2025, a resolution opposing tariffs against trading partners and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
All right, I have a motion by Vice President Emerson, second by Parliamentarian Thomas. Vice President Emerson, would you like to speak?
No, I think I've discussed enough. I have, any other commissioners, feel free.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
No, thank you, Madam President.
See no other commissioners, please vote.
Is this another voice vote?
Is this another voice vote, or are we gonna... Okay. Commissioner Crackman.
No.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner John Paul Young.
No.
Commissioner Burrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Yes.
Commissioner Blake.
No.
Commissioner Atkins.
No.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lazarus.
No.
Commissioner Emerson.
Yes.
Okay. And that motion fails with six in support, five in opposition, and one absent, and brings us to the consideration of old business. There's no need for action today, that is just an item to remind you that we still have openings for the Youth Advisory Council members, so we can move to new business, where the first item to be considered is 20.1, considering the reappointment of Judge Stephen Callaway to the Caddo Parish Port Commission.
Well, I had a motion. It went away. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner John Atkins, and second by Commissioner Victor Thomas. Commissioner Atkins, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I know some people may be frustrated with some commissioners right now, but that should not affect the reappointment of Judge Stephen Callaway, who's been a good and faithful servant to the Caddo Parish Port Commission. His resume and his oath of office are both attached. He's an excellent member of that body, and I encourage us to reappoint him to the board. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. I would like to believe that each one of us are professionals around this horseshoe, and would, our vote should reflect that. We've received letters in support of this reappointment, and I do plan to support it. We are passionate about what we believe in, to be what's right, and that is for human rights. Just because your house is not on fire today, doesn't mean it won't be tomorrow. It's not wise to buy a fire extinguisher when it's already on fire. Thank you.
Madam President, it was not my intention to imply anything disrespectful to any member of the body. I just didn't want, you know, I just wanted to cool things down a little bit.
Point taken, but I think it was necessary to make sure that we understand that as well. There's no reason to vote in a different capacity, unless you have other reasons. Commissioner Ken Emerson.
Madam President, I just want to say, no one can gauge the way that I feel. That's behind me, the last resolution. I wouldn't hold that against this appointment, you know what I mean? So, you know, sometimes people will say things because they stereotype people. And what they did say, so is a man thinking, so is that person. But there's no way that I would have even thought about voting against this gentleman, because had I, if I would, I would have nominated someone else in that position, had plenty of time. So I just want, you know, to everybody to know, you can't think for other people as to how they feel. Thank you.
Thank you. See no other discussion, please vote. Commissioner Carthor, your tablet is still down, he's in affirmative.
Thank you for that. And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent. And brings us to the next item for consideration, which is to consider adopting the 2025 Audit Plan. This comes as a recommendation from the Audit and Finance Committee, and the minutes of that meeting are attached.
Okay, I have a motion, Commissioner Stefan Jones, second, Parliamentarian Thomas. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
I'll hear so the chair of the committee.
Okay. Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you. Yes, we spoke about this in the work session. The Audit and Finance Committee met on Monday, talked through the issues we'd like our auditor to address in the coming year. One is payroll and benefits, and the other was access to, how our employees access the electronic system. The whole Audit and Finance Committee was supportive of that recommendation, and we would like to ask the body as a whole to approve the recommendation from the committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. See no other discussion, please vote.
And Commissioner Kaufman is at affirmative, but... And that makes that adopted with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent. And this brings us to the section that we discussed earlier. 20.3 features the portion of the agenda that is the Caddo Parish Commission acting as the governing authority of the I-49 North Economic Development District. And there are two resolutions to be considered today. The first resolution is available to be adopted, the second is not available to be adopted until April 17. And at this time, 20.3.1, Resolution 1 of 2025, is a resolution providing notice of intention to levy and collect a two-cent sales tax... I'm sorry, a two-cent sales and use tax upon the sale at retail, the use, the lease, or rental, the consumption and storage for use or consumption of tangible personal property and other property subject to sales and use tax in the state of Louisiana either now or in the future, and on sales of services within the boundaries of the I-49 North Corridor Economic Development District for a period commencing on May 1, 2025, and ending May 31, 2032, in accordance with and as authorized by Part 2, Chapter 27, Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950 as amended, and authorizing the publication of a notice of intention to levy and collect such sales and use tax, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. There are a number of attachments there for your consideration.
All right, I have a motion by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas, and I have a second by Commissioner Roy Burrell. Commissioner Thomas, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say that I had done some additional research and fact-finding and all these different things, and I had come to do a whole statement of how I spent $1.18 at one, at the store that's being discussed, and how I spent $1.14 on the same items at another store. But all of that is irrelevant. All of that, I think, is just a distraction to what we've seen here today. We've seen this body speak passionately about their ideals. We've seen this body legislate a number of items here today. We've heard a public hearing where we have heard pleas from the people that this directly affects, and I want to veer away from that. I want us to come together. I want to say here publicly, as I have stated before, that I hold no ill will towards my fellow commissioner. As a matter of fact, I want to say here, we've seen the plans for this, we've seen the future of this. It's very important to make sure this happens for me in 2032, as opposed to having to take 10 to 15 years to see this realized, this dream. I ask all my colleagues that we do this in honor of the late Todd Hopkins. I say to my brother, if I can, I don't care about breaking rules and everything, brother, let's stand together and do this. I will walk with you door to door, I will walk with you for whoever needs this to be explained to them, I will deal with the political consequences with you together. Let's do this for the future of Caddo Parish. Let's work together on this. I want to come up there and take the picture with you for the ribbon cutting, for the healthcare center, for the jobs that are gonna be created from this. There's a reason why this was, why this was the plan. Let's stick to our word, let's do this together as a body, so that if there's nothing else we can do, we can hang our hats on the fact that we did this together. It's not necessary for us to continue the political theater. We all sitting up here know that this is a good plan. We all know, the people who are paid to do this have sit there and have crunched these numbers to the T. That's why, that's why they presented that plan to us. Let's do this together. Let's take care of not only the village of Houston, let's take care of the parish of Caddo, together. I don't know if we can do this, and I, brother, I want us, I want us, if you're willing to, I'll shake on this right here with you, let's do this together. Is that something you're willing to do, sir? I rest my case, ma'am. Let's vote.
Right. The next commissioner is Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Okay, Madam Chair, I want to get back to the two questions that I asked earlier, just to be clear before our vote. And I think the gentleman did, well, he started to clarify my first question. On the TIF district of 2%, it only applies to this business that I see here in the center, and not the lots that are, that's around it. Come up.
That is, that is correct, Commissioner. Just inside the building.
That's the way I understood it when we did it before.
The building's 8,626 square feet, so...
Okay, so my next question, then, the lots that's around this business, are those commercial lots? There are no residential lots?
That's correct. There is, there is a space on the backside for possible RV parking. So, and that would be lots...
That's still commercial, I would...
Yeah, lots 2 and 4, I think they're, they're gonna be engineered for possible RV parking.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chris Crackman.
Thank you, Madam President. I think there's a lot of people that are giving me a lot more credit than I deserve as far as who can control the federal government and ICE and all of this. I wouldn't even know who the hell to call. And... And I never said anything about the employment status of anybody, the employment status of anybody at the TA truck stop. I didn't say anything about who does or doesn't work there, or how many jobs there are. All I did was read a public statement that I requested. I don't know any of that. I heard word of it and asked around. I have asked a lot of questions and made very little statements about this whole ordeal. And as it stands now, obviously, I don't like it. But I will say this, as far as people being attacked, I did not bring this to the table. When this originally came to the table, it got voted down. It came back, but not by me. This is not my fight. It's, as far as I knew, not a fight. On principle, I'm not gonna vote for a tax increase. Not gonna happen. Especially whenever we're already doing a property tax abatement. And I know everybody's tired of hearing me say the same old tired stuff. But at the end of the day, I was against this and am against this on principle. And as far as anybody coming up here and saying, this is my town, it is the people of Houston's town. And they are your boss, just the same as this is not my parish. I am not doing the work of the village of Houston. I'm doing the work of the villagers of Houston. And if that offends anybody, I apologize. But that's what I'm here to do, is do the work of the people, not any administration. And as far as calling it political theater, I don't even know how to political theater. All I'm doing is reading the facts and going what I have to go by. And we can attach the name Todd Hopkins to it all we want to. And I hate that we continue to do that. I really do, because I do not want to respect Todd Hopkins. I consider Todd Hopkins to be a friend, although we were opponents. We were just indifferent on a few things. And the I-49 tax district is one of those things. And I won that election by 2%, and I don't mean any disrespect by that. Now, I have given a list of questions to our clerk, and he should have a hard copy for everybody available. And I would appreciate these questions being answered by whomever before we would ever vote on this. Even if it's to the 17th. Can the newly established tax pay for a past investment or future? Shouldn't a tax be established before the project is started? Is there a precedent on a TIF being established after a project has long been completed? Are we promoting economic development or repaying for it? Is the quote-unquote "road" public or private by definition? Does the pilot require compliance with state and federal law? What's the opinion of the IDB on the hiring of illegals?
Point of, point of order, that is not germane to the item at hand, thank you. The employment status of the individuals working there is not germane to this item.
The chair's thing is...
Well, maybe this will be germane. Is being in violation of U.S. Code 132 for a breach of any agreement of the IDB, the parish of Caddo, or otherwise?
Point of order, not germane to the item at hand.
It stands.
You all have the questions, it's all read into the record. I think, I think it's crystal clear that what my position is on this, just out of principle alone, in this ICE raid business, that came, that came along. People say it might be convenient timing or whatever, it was my understanding the raid was before this initiative even came up. I don't know. But what I do know...
Point of information and point of clarity, that is incorrect.
Well, if I could, have my 10 seconds back.
Continue, you have the floor.
I think it's important to know what is going on at the place, and do we want to attach our name to it, first and foremost. Second of all, if we have a 10% tax, do we want to add a 2% tax? And we can sit... And we can sit here all day and talk about how we're taking the food out of the mouths of children, I heard it six times since I've been sitting here. So we can preach all about that, but at the same time, we can raise taxes in a small village, excuse me, at a store in a small village. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Crackman, have you presented these questions to legal before today?
Uh, so.
And I know that you said you didn't want to respect Todd Hopkins, did you mean you didn't want to disrespect him?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that we got that on record, thank you. Commissioner John Paul Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say that I think it's really great when we are passionate about local issues under our own authority, that's all.
I'm gonna let you have it. Commissioner Ron Carthon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions, and these are primarily to the mayor of Houston. What's the population of your city, or your village?
According to the census, it was 318.
I'm sorry?
318, according to the census.
318. Okay, and my second question would be, what would Houston be without the truck stop? How has this truck stop been of benefit to your village?
Well, before the truck stop, we were in a financial, I would say bind, our water system was in a financial bind. With this tax, being able to start the tax from the very beginning, that's the only way I was able to get my residents of my town to even consider having a tax, was because the truck stop was coming in, that was going to bring revenue. Without the revenue of that truck stop, you tell me, we didn't have the money to run the town, we didn't have the money to do our water system, which we have 245 customers on, that's just customers, housing in those probably 660-ish people that would be affected by their water. If we don't have a water system, what are we going to do?
So it would be pretty easy to make the analogy, if this truck stop was not there, the village of Houston probably wouldn't be existing too much longer based on water needs and some other needs that any village or city has at a particular time, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I may, when I become mayor, in our bank account, there was like $40,000.
And today?
Today, all total, everything, I'm going to say probably $100,000 in the town account, almost 200 in the water account, and then we have a CD account, our savings now.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Yes.
The chair would like to recognize Attorney Frazier. I see you on the board.
I just did want to clarify, you asked whether or not any of the questions have been asked. I don't know if Commissioner Crackman got my email, but I have answered the ones that I was asked.
Thank you, Attorney Frazier, for that clarification. Parliamentarian Thomas.
Yeah, point of order, Mr. Lazarus was on, I have spoken once, I'll allow Mr. Lazarus.
Will you get back on the board for me? Commissioner Lazarus.
I would like to speak on the call to the question, call for the question. I would just like to encourage-
He can. It would-
Iverson.
Okay. All right, go ahead. We're voting on calling for the question.
And Commissioner Carthon, I'm sorry, is it no? Okay.
I should be a no, I said yes, but I meant no.
You meant to say no?
Yes.
I meant to say no, not yes.
Okay, so that record should reflect seven yes votes, four no votes, and one abstention. I believe it still carries. Yes.
Who's abstaining and for what reason? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, did I say abstain?
It's been a long day, you did say abstain.
I meant absent, forgive me.
All right. We're voting on the motion.
This is Resolution 1 of 2025 of the Caddo Parish Commission acting as the governing authority of the I-49 North Economic Development District, and Commissioner Carthon? Yes. And that motion carries with seven in support, four in opposition, and one absent. And the next item on your agenda, 20.3.2, is not available for adoption today, but I will read it into the record and it will be available for consideration, and it will also have a public hearing on April 17th. It is a resolution establishing a sales tax within the boundaries of the I-49 North Corridor Economic Development District in connection with the pilot agreement with Edgemont Holdings LLC and otherwise providing with respect thereto. That brings us to communiques and reports.
All right, Vice President Iverson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to announce that Pines Road Area Business Association monthly meeting will be Monday, March 24th, 6 o'clock PM, 6825 Pines Road. Our guest will be Mr. Patrick Wesley, the Caddo Parish Parks and Recreation Director, as well as Henry Whitehorn, Sheriff of Caddo Parish. Also, the Pines Road Area Business Association with the Louisiana Workforce Commission, as well as the Veterans Celebration Committee, will host our annual job fair, May 1st, 10 o'clock AM to 2 o'clock PM. Please note your calendar and anyone that would like to participate, please contact me. Thank you. I'm sorry. And I also like to recognize the death of Mr. Frank Taylor, one of our long-term American Legion Post 450 members, and he was the chaplain of the organization, very faithful worker. His funeral will be Saturday, the 22nd, 1 o'clock PM, Good Samaritan Funeral Home. Commissioner Carthon and myself will deliver a resolution on behalf of his services as well as to his family. The interment will be Wednesday, March 26th, 10:30 AM, Northwest Louisiana Veteran Cemetery for Military Honors. Thank you.
Thank you. Parliamentarian Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I wouldn't be able to sleep tonight if I did not say this. We just heard my colleagues talk about facts and being presented facts and things, and I don't know how long we belabored the facts. I don't know how long we've exhaustively presented the facts. This failed January the 6th because of lies being told, bold-faced lies. Anybody that wants to respect Commissioner Hopkins wouldn't have sat in this body and said that Commissioner Hopkins was against it. That's on record, that's what they said. This is a very sad day, to see people sit here and vote against the best interests of that town, to vote, sometimes, maybe you got to look at the mirror of your principles and see if your principles need to be evaluated, because this is not, it's just not right. And I appreciate my colleagues that did stand up and that did want to see this for the future of Houston, but once again, and I'll say this probably for the rest of my time here, pay attention to those votes on that board. That's going to let you know who's here to progress this parish and who's here to stand in opposition against things based on principles. To stand in opposition of your progress based on principles, principles that fail to see your human value. I rest my case and I hope everybody has a great evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron Carthon.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two questions. Madam CEO, feasibility study at Lynbrook, have you gotten any idea what's going on?
I'm sorry, I didn't, feasibility study for what?
Lynbrook Park.
I'll have to find out on that.
That's no problem, thank you very much. And secondly, I just wanted to acknowledge Southern Hill Business Association had a bowling this past Friday, and Lazarus, I need to tell you, you better get ready, I'm up to 150 without even practicing now. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Grace Anne Blake.
Thank you, Madam President. We've all heard enough about the resolutions, but there was a comment that was made that I feel like I need to speak on, and one was about wealth. Wealth is relative. Comments about the IRS, and as a small business owner of 26 years, some would consider me to be wealthy and others are considering me to not be wealthy. But I've dealt with the IRS for many years, I've been through a couple of audits, it's pretty miserable, and the end of the day is important that we make decisions financially that continue to move our country forward, our state forward, and our parish and city As a mother, I have to make sure that I am fed so I can feed my children, so that then we can feed others around us. As a business owner, I have to make decisions for the whole of the company and not the And so these are principles that we're using to make these decisions. And I will take the judgment thrown at me about standing for principles that I believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roy Barrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to reiterate the fact that-
Is your mic on?
It's on.
Commissioner Barrell.
It's on. Just to reiterate that a lot of these national issues that we call national doesn't have local consequences. Every one, every issue that I can think of that is being discussed now on a national level, well, it's really not being discussed, it's just being ramrodded, is affecting us locally. And I think it's very naive for us to even put out to the public. We're supposed to be helping to educate the public, not to misinform the public, that these national issues do not affect us locally. And if there's anything that we can do from a local standpoint to get that message up, just like what you're seeing every day, I don't know what news program or what program you're watching on TV to get your news, but these town halls are starting to fill up and they are not democratic operatives, as Mr. Musk and the president want to say. These are their own constituents, that's why they don't even want to come and listen to them anymore. That's what we do in a democracy, we the people, we the people folks. We need to send that message up and we just have to have, we just happen to have a mechanism here called a commission that allows us to try to get that information above where we are and our constituents expect us to do that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Victor Thomas.
Thank you, ma'am. I did want to say, within my passion for speaking out for those who may have voted and unfortunately, 2% more of them voted against their best interest, but I will say to everyone that early voting is going on right now. This body is working very hard to try to enable more opportunities for people to take part in early voting. The offices are located, of course, downtown Shreveport and also on, can you name that address for me, Mr. Iverson?
On-
On Normandy Drive, correct, sir.
No, no.
No, I'm sorry, no, it's over, it's over, on Financial Plaza, correct. Raspberry Lane and Financial Plaza. Please make sure that you participate in early voting. For the sake of 2%, I'll go ahead and say it, I went and spent $11.18 at the truck stop in TA. Madam Administrator, could you do me a favor, if it may take you too long, I'm sorry, but could you add 2% to my total of $11.18 and let me know how much I'm going to end up having to pay now? $11.40? I think that's a pretty hefty penny that's worth seeing the growth and the future of District 1, even if others do not see it that way. District 1 is in Caddo Parish and that's what we were elected to do, is to look out for the entire parish. Now, that's the principle that I stand on and I hope that others can see it as well. Thank you and I hope everyone has a good evening. Please go vote. Election is March 29th. Please stand on your principles and go vote. I don't care who you vote for, what you vote for, just stand on your principles and make sure you participate and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Crackman.
Mr. Madam President, I'm just going to err on the side of emotional intelligence and say, if anyone-
That's my cue.
-comes to District 1, please, please give me a call, I'll come meet you for lunch or something. Appreciate it.
That's it? Vice President Iverson.
I just want to say maybe to some of my newer colleagues, I got elected in October 1991, took office January 1992, my second year, I could go up in Washington DC and navigate all of the congressional offices as well as the departments. And I will employ you to do the same thing. Don't put it all on the administration or the clerk, you have the power and authority to do that. And guess what? Nine and a half times out of 10, they're going to listen to you and you're going to find people that you can have some direct insight to instead of a lot of scripted things when you come to those congressional delegates up there on your own. Went to New York and driving in New York City, more cabs than I ever saw in my life, yellow cabs, up there checking on Moody's, our Moody's bond rate, and you see where we are today from that particular time up to now. You have a direct responsibility to find out everything from Washington DC to Baton Rouge down to Government Plaza. That's your responsibility, because you vote for the president, you vote for the senators, you vote for the House of Representatives, same thing, the governor and the state senators and the state representatives. You have the same constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we're talking about national movements, I know that we brought the Exponement Summit to Caddo Parish from a national movement, and I want to make sure that we try to get a meeting scheduled for that, sometimes after our next meeting, April 10th, somewhere in there. And I've talked to Commissioner Stefan Jones about coaching as well. I serve on a national level for the purpose of being able to bring things back to Caddo Parish and execute them here at home as well as on the state level. So I think that it's very unfortunate that we could sit here with a straight face and say that national resolutions does not apply to us here locally. When I talk to children, I often describe us as the fingers of government. Without us, how does it get to the arms? And without the arms, how does it get to the head? That's our responsibility. And that's not an opinion, that's a fact. On 3/31, we will honor women here in Caddo Parish. Please submit your names of the candidates to JF no later than Monday, March 24th, and don't forget to wear your purple. That's Monday, March 31st. As it has been mentioned, early voting is going on right now until Saturday, March 22nd, and March 29th is election day. A lot of people are expecting a low turnout. I pray that we prove them wrong. Your children are on the ballot. United Way is currently hosting its Tales and Eels fundraiser at Margaritaville. I'm on my way there as a board member and I hope to see you all there after we finally leave this meeting today, all right?
We're going to eat?
Yes, we're going to eat Tales and Eels. All right, and I hear a motion to adjourn. All right.